All ready.
Great. Good. Looks like we got everybody, or Lauren, are you there? There we go. All right. If we can get Channel Eight started, please. Does that happen already?
Emily started the recording and Channel Eight is unmuted. Yes, sir.
Great, so I will go ahead and call to order the Thursday, March fourteenth, twenty twenty four, special meeting of the Boulder City Council. Happy Pi Day to all who celebrate. And Alicia, if you could take the role, please.
Yes, sir. Thank you, and happy snowy council meeting day Thursday, everyone. We'll start tonight's roll call with, as usual, Councilmember Adams.
Present.
Benjamin.
Present.
Mayor Brockett.
Present.
Councilmember Falkerts.
Present.
Marquess.
Present.
Shuhar.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Spear.
Present.
Councilmember Wallack.
Present for the moment. I'm having some internet difficulties, but I'll be here for as long as I can.
Ditto on that, sir, today. And Councilmember Weiner.
Present.
Mayor, we have our quorum.
Thanks so much, Alicia. Well, we have one public hearing tonight, so if you could take us to that, please.
Our public hearing tonight is our twenty twenty four Boards and Commission Appointments.
Great. And Nuri, are you going to introduce that item?
I am, and we have actually really great show out for people that were volunteering, and I know that our great city clerk, Ms. Alicia Johnson, is going to run us through that. But an amazing turnout, and so excited to pass the baton over to her. Thank you, Alicia.
Thank you, Nuri, and thank you, Mayor, and good evening, Council. Alicia Johnson serving you as your city clerk and records manager. We are, before we begin the process of nominating and appointing our boards and commission candidates to fill our current vacancies, I'm going to provide an outline of our process for this item. There will be two steps. First, I will present a single slide of the number of seats that were vacant, the number of applicants that we received, applications that we received, along with the number of eligible candidates. Second, I will ask the mayor to open our public hearing, close it when it is complete, and turn the discussion back to me to provide counsel with guidance on how the nomination and appointment process will proceed. John, if you would please pull up the slide. Next slide, please. Here you will see a twenty twenty four application summary, and as you can see by just the breakdown, we had a total of thirty seven seats that we are looking to appoint tonight. There were a hundred applications received. There were a hundred applications received. And we qualified eighty six applications to move forward. Thank you, John. You can take the slides down. So at this point, I will turn it over to the mayor to open up the public hearing, unless he wants me to read the public participation guidelines next.
I don't think that'll be necessary tonight, Alicia. We have one public speaker, I believe, is familiar with those guidelines. So I will go ahead and open the public hearing, and I will call on Lynn Seagull to be our testifier. Lynn, you have three minutes.
I did not currently see Lynn online.
Okay. No sign of Lynn?
No, sir.
All right, with our one person who's signed up not being present, I will go ahead and close the public hearing then. And Alicia, if you could guide us through how things are going to work tonight, please.
All right, sir. Thank you. I will now review the formal candidate nomination process. Please be reminded of this process.
Alicia, I'm getting a wicked echo. I'm trying to figure out where we have an extra hot mic, hot mic creating that feedback.
Ah, it might be the council chambers.
I associate, Sarah, your mic is thinking.
It might have been the council chambers because it was unmuted.
Yep, and you sound, you sound better, you sound better now. So sorry, sorry for interrupting you.
No, I was hearing it too, so I thought it was just my, on my side, so thank you for pointing that out. All right, again, please be reminded that this procedure is also outlined in our Boulder Divise Code and in your agenda materials. We will proceed through each nomination, one board or commission at a time, in alphabetical order by board title. Council members will make nominations to fill those vacancies, one seat at a time. Once nominations for a seat have been made by council members, council is welcome to discuss with each other before taking final action. If only one person is nominated for a seat, that appointment will stand if there are no objections. If more than one person is nominated for the same seat, we have a specific process for narrowing the candidate down, the candidates down to one finalist. A vote of support will be held for each individual nominated. Candidates must receive a minimum of five votes to be declared the finalist for a vacant seat. If the first round of voting does not produce a clear winner, the candidate with the fewest votes will drop from the nominee list, and the vote will be conducted again. This will continue until a single nominee remains. The order of nominees will be called either alphabetically or reverse alphabetically by last name of the nominee, depending upon the flip of my handy dandy coin. From that point on, I will alternate the order for any further nominee votes during the meeting where more than one candidate has been nominated. If a person is not selected for the first seat they are nominated for, they can be nominated for one of the other available seats on that board or commission, or for any other board which they apply to. This process is followed for each board or commission. One council, once council has determined a single appointment candidate for each seat, a motion is needed to approve the appointments as elected, and this item will conclude for the evening. Are there any questions? And for council's convenience, John Morse is accompanying me as the back end support for this process, and nominated candidates will be highlighted as they are nominated, and those nominated will be noted in red color, just to keep, so you'll be able to keep track in real time. All right, Mayor, I now turn this back over to you, and John and I are here to support as this process is continued.
Okay, thanks so much, Alicia. And everyone, if you can bear with me, I'm traveling and on a smaller screen than usual, and so I'm going to have a lot to flip back and forth and to keep track of the voting and such, so maybe just a little bit slower. If you can just bear with me and have a little patience, I'd appreciate it. And also, I understand that the members of the Boards and Commissions Council Committee would like to highlight a couple of notes. So I don't know, Tara or Lauren, would you like to speak? Lauren, I see you've got your hand up.
Yeah, thank you, Erin. So just as your members of the Boards and Commission Subcommittee, we wanted to make a couple recommendations for boards that we would hold open for more applicants. We wanted to recommend both the BLA and the Beverage Licensing Authority and the Design Advisory Board to be held open for another round of applications.
Great. Do council members have any questions, or is there, is there any disagreement with the recommendation of the Subcommittee?
Is this something that we do a nod of five on, or vote, or do we just go with it?
Teresa.
I would recommend a vote, since it requires nominations and selections require a vote. I think we should give equal weight to a decision to delay.
I'd like to make a motion that we do what Lauren suggested.
Second.
Great. In other words, to reopen the Boulder the Beverage Licensing Authority and Design Advisory Board. Okay, we've got a motion and a second. All in favor, please raise your hand. Okay, I get that unanimous. Thank you for bringing that to our attention. Lauren and Tara. And with that, John, if you could bring the slides back up, please, with the information.
Mayor, if I may ask a question, since there is a motion and a, the motion carried to extend the recruitment for those two boards, do we have a timeframe of how long we want that extension to be?
Lauren or Tara, do you have a recommendation on that?
It's usually that there's a mid-year, I would say a few months. There's usually a mid-year check-in. Just maybe people in charge of boards and commissions on this call want to weigh in on staff.
We can extend it as it is now. We can open it back up and extend it for, say, another April, May, another five weeks or four weeks, or we can wait until the midterm recruitment. I think that's where I would like the clarification on.
Maybe we could wait and see what other positions we have open and make that decision at the end.
Okay. I appreciate that. Thank you.
All right.
Our first board is our Arts Commissions. We have one seat available for appointment, and that is to appoint a member to a five-year term through March thirty first, twenty twenty nine. We have five, two, six candidates, Lynn Kioka McHaleb, Rabbi Ruth Gurfar, Gail Gray, Gray Grimm, Jill Katzenberger, and Alan Ohashi.
Nominations. Nicole.
Yeah, I wanted to nominate Jill Katzenberger, and would you like me just to say a couple of words now, Erin, or Nate?
How about I take the nominations and then people can speak to them? Tara?
I'd like to nominate Lynn, I hope I pronounce this correctly, Siocha McHaleb.
Very good. Mark?
No, that was going to be my nomination as well, so, thank you.
Okay. Nicole, would you like to speak to your nomination?
Yes, I think this, this place where Jill exists in the steam kind of space, the creative design art, this is a really interesting area that I don't know that we've had anybody step forward with that yet. Also, I think the work that Jill does, particularly with youth and engaging young children in the arts is, is something that's fairly unique as well. So those were kind of two of the main things that really stood out for me in that, that made Jill unique in this regard. And I also just want to say, we have so many good applicants on this one and for all the others. So I hope that everybody who applies knows that we are choosing among very qualified people pretty much every board here. So just, you know, really appreciate everyone who applied. We've got a wealth of choices this year.
That's for sure. Tara, would you like to speak?
Yeah, but I'm also fine. Mark, do you want to speak? For Lynn, or do you want me to?
Mark, you're muted.
You can take it.
Okay, I'm nominating Lynn. She had a great impact in passing two A, that very important help that we're going to give to the arts community for funding. And she makes a big impact when it comes to fundraising for the arts. I think she's a pretty powerful person, so. It's my although I agree with Nicole that there were so many great applicants and yeah, there were so many.
Very good. And just for, for everybody's sake, and especially our new council members, it is generally, folks will speak to their nominations, although it is not required, and other people can add words if they would like, but there is really, it is not necessary for everybody to speak to every nomination, because it would take a long time. But that, in given that, does anyone else want to speak to this? Seeing none. Oh, yes.
Thank you. I just wanted to say, yes, I definitely think that Lynn's experience as somebody who brought that piece together, as well as the Dairy Arts Board experience, will be useful. And at the same time, I really was very impressed by the Jill's application, particularly as it related, not only to what Nicole already shared, but also as it relates to expanding beyond traditional arts organizations like Out Boulder County, NAACP, Class A, and I just, I think of when folks were advocating on to B or two A, and one of the pieces was around equity and bringing in more and different audiences. And so I really appreciated that about her application, as well as her experience on Denver's Art Museum, which is one of my favorite art museums. And so just having a diverse set of experiences, not only in equity, but also in the types of arts and really expanding what we, and being inclusive of all of the different art forms. So, thank you.
Thanks. All right, Alicia, are you gonna, you going to flip the coin to determine our order here?
I'm ready, sir. Heads, we go alphabetical, tails, we go reverse alphabetical. And it is tails, so we will vote on Jill first.
And Alicia, do you have an auditor there, just to make sure you're not fudging this here at all?
No, sir. You just have to take my wonderful word for it.
Okay, very good. All right, so reverse alphabetical, so raise your hand, everyone in favor of Jill Katzenberger. I got one, two, three, four, five, six. And all those in favor of Lynn McHaleb? I got one, two, and Mark, you might want to come back on camera if you can, but I'm guessing. Well. I guess, Mark, if you wouldn't mind letting us know, just so we have you included.
I'm wondering if his internet blipped, saying that was happening.
Yeah. This may go on all night. I apologize. My vote was for Lynn.
Okay, thank you. So Jill Katzenberger is selected.
All right, thank you, John. Next, we have our Beverage Licensing Authority.
We're deferring that one.
Next, we have our Board of Zoning Adjustment. We have one seat available on that board. That is seat four, and it is to appoint a member to a five-year term through March thirty first, twenty twenty nine. We have the one applicant of Ben Doyle.
Do we have a nomination?
Okay, Lauren. Okay, I didn't know we needed one if we were
I'd like to nominate Ben Doyle.
There you go.
Any objections? Seeing none, Ben is appointed by acclamation. Thank you, Ben.
Right, thank you. Next, we have our Boulder Junction Access District Parking Commission. We have three seats available here, but our applicant is only eligible for seat five. Jennifer Osh is our applicant, and to be noted that she also applied to the Transportation Advisory Board. Seat five is to appoint a member to a five-year term through three thirty one, twenty nine.
I got Nicole and then Matt.
Yeah, and I, I believe that Jen is not actually eligible for, and may not be eligible for this board. She's not the property owner rep, but maybe for seat number five. I did speak with her, and she had a preference for TAB over this, this particular board.
I guess one possibility would be to hold this one and until after we're done with TAB and see if, if she is selected for that board. But Tara and Matt?
Well, I'd like to nominate Jennifer Oaks, because I think she'd be outstanding for this board, and we are desperate for outstanding board members. And her perspective as a person with disabilities would be so important to this neighborhood, and just the way it's transportation and walkability and curbs, et cetera. So I would love her for this board, if you're listening to me, Jennifer.
Thanks, Tara. Matt?
I have a functional question. This is a five-person board, and if we don't appoint Jennifer to this, does this board, can this board make quorum? Or does it sort of cease to function with insufficient people appointed to this board?
John has been speaking with Community Vitality people that maintain this board, and so John does have some insight on that. John?
Good evening, City Council. Bear with me, I got a lot of tabs open behind the scenes. This is John Morse, Elections Administrator for the city. So the, the two BJADs are struggling with, you know, recruitment, but the code has a provision that allows members to continue to serve until their vacancy is filled, and that's what they've been practicing up until this point. So we have a few members that have been on the board for a while, waiting for their seat to be filled, but, but they are meeting quorum at this time.
Okay, I appreciate that. I just want to flag these two BJADs. We got to fix this. So I'd love for us to just flag this, circle back, maybe throw it on some, some work for us to do. But thi- this has been going on for far too long, so we got to figure out what a permanent solution is to the both BJADs going forward, because we just don't want to keep carrying this, this concerning issue forward. So anyway, just flag that if we can, and we'll circle back, but thanks for the answer on that, John.
Welcome.
Great. And I got Nicole and Taisha.
Yeah, and I just wanted to advocate for at least waiting until we're looking at TAB. I think there's, there's something that's not, I think Jen's perspective is incredibly valuable, and I would love to see her on a board that we think of as more influential in the city, particularly around transportation. When I think about who, who really struggles to use our transportation system, it is people in the disability community. They are one of kind of the top groups for me, and I would just like, I don't want her to kind of put her on a board that is less kind of powerful, influential. I think it's really important that we're elevating, lifting up this, this perspective. And anyway, so would like to kind of hold, hold on this one, or just sort of decide that we're going to open it up again and try to find some other folks for this.
Thanks, Nicole. Taisha?
I agree with Nicole. I also wanted to briefly pick up just that the Boulder Junction Access District for Travel Demand Management also only has one. And so to Matt's earlier comment, I just wanted to echo and agree that there's just some synergies, I think, that we need to discuss as a council, and just, and this also, I think dovetails nicely with the report that we've received on Boards and Commission. So I look forward to continuing this conversation with my fellow council members and staff. Thank you.
And Alicia?
No, I think my question has been answered, sir, just by Councilmember Adams and Mayor Pro Tim Spear's conversation, so thank you.
Great. Well, and Tara, did you want to add something? And you've got your hand up.
Oh, it's up? Oh, I need to lower it, but I will say that I, I am perfectly thrilled and fine to wait until after the TAB vote.
Okay, so then if, if no one objects, if we can hold this one and come back to it after we have discussed the Transportation Advisory Board appointments, and see whether Jen is or is not appointed to that board. Okay, and Taisha, your hand is up? Is that? No, okay. All right, so if we can move on, please.
Yes, sir. Next is our Boulder Junction Access District Travel Demand Management Commission. There are also three seats available here, and I do want to know for the record that the fifth seat is to appoint a member to a five-year term through three thirty one, twenty twenty nine, and that seat does not require the person to be a property owner. Seat one and seat three, seat one is for a four-year term through three thirty one, twenty eight, and seat three is for a unexpired two-year term through three thirty one, twenty six. Both seat one and seat three have the property owner or representative requirements attached to that seat. We have one applicant, Stephanie Pike.
Great, two nomination here. You can raise your hand. Tara?
I nominate Stephanie Pike. Can you remind us which of these seats does she fill, one or five?
Available for all of them.
Okay, great.
Okay, so I think for one, because I think it might be easier to get somebody for five.
Very good. And I don't believe she applied for another board, so I don't think we have the same issue as with Jennifer Oaks. So if there are no objections, we can appoint Stephanie by acclamation. Very good. To the seat number one.
Yes, sir. Thank you very much. Next, we have our Cannabis Licensing Advisory Board. We have three seats available for appointment this recruitment period. Seat three is to appoint a member for an unexpired four-year term through three thirty one, twenty eight. And through seat six is also for an unexpired three-year term through three thirty one, twenty twenty seven. Both seats three and six are required to be marijuana business owners or representative of those businesses. Seat eight is to appoint a non-voting ex officio member to an unexpired term through three thirty one, twenty five. Now, we have Adam Foster, who is currently eligible for seats three or six. And the three applicants eligible for seat eight are Jacque De Colo, Brian Izan, and Dale Kreiser. Now, Jacque did apply to the Environmental Advisory Board as well.
Great. And just a staff request, if we can get council members' still hands lowered, that'd be a huge help.
Yes, sir.
Awesome. All right. So nomination. Tara?
Well, I'm going to nominate Adam Foster for seat the longer seat.
Seat number three?
Yes, seat number three. I had a great interview.
Very good. He's the only one eligible. So any objections? Seeing none, give that to Adam by acclamation. Any other nominations? Matt?
Keep, keep moving this train forward. So I nominate Dell Chrysler to the non-voting ex officio spot.
Seat number eight.
Looking that?
Okay, any other nominations? Lauren?
I'll nominate Jacque De Colo to the seat number eight.
Any others? Seeing no others. Matt, would you like to speak to yours?
No, I mean, I, I had actually done these appointments, and so I thought, I thought Dell provided some, some good answers, and I think it was just sort of measured in, in, in that approach. And so I think that's certainly as CLAB moves into a quasi-judicial state, I, I thought Dell was, was able to sort of see that and be ready to rise to that added responsibility that CLAB has not had previously.
Thanks. Lauren?
I think we, you know, Jacque running in multiple elections and just has a really strong interest in getting more involved in our community. And you know, I see that and want, and I think this would be a good opportunity for that.
Okay. Seeing no other hands raised. Alicia, are we in alphabetical order this time?
No, sir. We are in reverse.
Okay, so you've been switching as we go along with the acclamations.
No, no, you're right. I just wanted to see if you were paying attention. We are going alphabetical this time.
God, it had me fooled there for a minute.
See, I got a little humor in me too sometimes.
All right. Okay, so all in favor of Jacque De Colo? I got one, two, three, four, five, six, and Dell Chrysler. I got three. So Jacque gets that on a six to three vote.
All right, thank you. Next, we have our Colorado, Colorado Chautauqua Association. Seat thirteen is to appoint a member to a three-year term through 3/31/2027. We have six applicants for this seat. George Kraft, who also applied to the Open Space Board of Trustees and the Parks and Rec Advisory Board. Jane Fennett. Gail Gray, who also applied to the Arts and the Design Advisory Boards. Alan Jones III. He applied to the OSBT as well. Melanie Lovett. And Richard Rohr. Richard also applied to the Environmental Advisory Board.
Nominations. Nicole?
I would like to nominate Alan Jones, the third.
Tara?
I love Alan Jones, and I also love Richard Rohr. So I am, for the sake of democracy, happy to have them both, and we can just vote on them.
Okay.
I can't even decide myself, to be honest.
Okay. Taysha, do you have a nomination?
I'd like to nominate Jane.
Jane Fennett, okay. Any others? Okay, Nicole, would you like to speak to yours?
Yes, I would love to. Thank you. I was just thrilled that we had a younger person applying to the Chautauqua Board. I thought this was just wonderful. I think, you know, Alan expressed that he is often at Chautauqua. He's a recent CU graduate lawyer. I thought that would be, you know, a nice, nice addition for the board there. And yeah, just appreciated his enthusiasm, his appreciation for Chautauqua as a resource for the community. And I think he would bring some really nice perspectives to the Chautauqua boards.
Great. Tara, do you want to say anymore?
Yeah. At first, I want to say, talk about Alan Jones because I loved him, plus his bird. I think, I agree with Nicole 100%. He would bring great perspective and diversity, and he's a lawyer. He is young, is everything that Chautauqua could use. And also, Richard Rohr is incredibly qualified. He understands Chautauqua, and he would also be a really great addition.
Taysha?
So I am nominating Jane because of the work that she's done, significant board experience, very family oriented, but also I really appreciated in that board experience, the work that she's done to around the listening circles and just using the outdoors in a different way beyond just the traditional hiking and biking. I love the experience in strategic planning. And I especially appreciated reaching out to diverse groups with volunteerism. When I go and I see, you know, I, I love Chautauqua. It's one of the, you know, I'm right here. And at the same time, you know, as a former leader for Outdoor Afro Colorado, when I was kicking groups on trails, it was hard to see that our volunteer base was not representative of community members like myself. And so I do think it's important having that perspective and somebody who was explicit about that need. I even look at the lineup of the incredible musicians that are coming to play, right? And even though they're fantastic, I just think this is this representative of all of our incredible, you know, cultural diversity. And so that's why I'm nominating her. Thank you so much. But I also agree with Alan and, and having younger folks, because that's another thing that I would love to see more of at Chautauqua. And Richard is also a very strong candidate. So, thank you.
Great. We've got great candidates here. All right. Any other words? Seeing none, I think we're in reverse alphabetical this time. So all votes for Richard Rohr. I got one. Alan Jones. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven. And Jane Fennett. Okay, very good. So that's Alan Jones III is the Chautauqua representative.
All right. Next, we, are we punning, are we gonna go ahead and defer the Design Advisory Board? Is that correct?
Yes, please.
All right. Next slide, John. Next is the Environmental Advisory Board. We have seat four up for appointment, and that is to appoint a member to a five-year term through 3/31/2029. We have four applicants, Jacque De Colo, Greg Hill, Annie Roshi, who also applied to the Parks and Rec Advisory Board, and Richard Rohr, who we just nominated, who cannot be considered on this board.
Neither can Jacque, correct?
Right. Okay.
So actually, Richard was, was not appointed to Chautauqua, so he is eligible for this board.
That's right. Okay, very good. So Jacque is the one that can't be considered, because he's already been appointed.
Right. Nominations. Taysha?
I would like to nominate Annie Roche, please.
Very good. Anybody else? All right. Seeing no other nominations. I think we can give this to Annie by acclamation.
All right. Next, we have our I think somebody, I hear that echo again. All right. Next, we have our Housing Advisory Board. We have two seats available, seat one and seat seven, and they are both to appoint a member to a five-year term through 3/31/29. We have six applicants, Matthew Applebaum, Kristen Day-Bred, Stephen Hennessy, who also applied to the Planning Board, Karen Hoskins, who is a sitting member, Karen Kathleen, is it Catherine Ca- Ca- Caritch, my apologies for messing that up, and Lila McHenry.
Nominations. Got a lot. Matt?
Thanks, Aaron. I'd like to nominate Corinne Hoskin and ever move on to having fulfill, fulfill a full term.
Tina?
That was my nomination.
Ooh, everybody, that was like the buzzer at Jeopardy. Okay, so we have Corinne Hoskin nominated. Did anyone offer any additional words? I'm, I'll go ahead and call on myself if y'all don't mind, because I've, I've known Corinne for a while, and she's done, I think, a phenomenal job on this board for the last year and represents a really important perspective as an owner in the Affordable Program, and also has great background in other forms of housing advocacy. So really pleased that she reapplied for this board.
Well said, Aaron. Thank you.
All right, seeing nobody else with their hand raised, we'll give it to Corinne by acclamation. Other nominations or nomination for the second seat? Lauren and then Nicole?
I'd like to nominate Stephen Hennessy.
Okay, looks like that was Nicole as well. Look. Any other nominations? Lauren, would you like to speak to that?
I just thought he gave a really great interview and appreciate the sort of background he has and think that he'll be great for this board. Nicole, maybe, do you want to give their thoughts?
Yes, I would love to. My notes are conveniently at exactly the right page. But yeah, I really appreciated, you know, his legal background, especially working with the EPRAAS program. He's a renter himself. I continue to believe that having more renters on our boards is going to be really good. And yeah, but no, really, really just appreciated his work already for the EPRAAS program. I think he'll be a really good perspective. Also, just appreciate again, having some newer folks who haven't been involved in boards before joining in, so that we are thinking about our next generation of leaders and how we're cultivating that leadership for our city. So, yes.
Great. I see no other hands. I'm going to call on myself again, if y'all don't mind. I, I'm not going to offer a nomination here, but I did want to give a big shout out to Matt Applebaum, our former mayor and longtime council member, who is incredibly knowledgeable in this area and whose service to the community is extraordinarily deep. And I mean, I do think it's, it's important to, to get some new voices and faces and to build the next generation of, of leaders. And so not nominating him this time, but just thank him for his continued service and continued participation in things like the East Boulder Subcommunity Working Group. So just had to do that shout out. Tara?
Not one to usually say I agree and then make a long speech, but I do want to agree and say that Matt has been a a paver of the way, and I do appreciate so much what he's done for this community. And I'm going to agree with Nicole because this is a really good board for people to get their feet wet and to make a big difference, especially, like she said, the next generation. But thanks to Matt for all that he's done and all that I believe he will continue to do.
Yes. Ryan?
Just would like to agree with Aaron and Tara on this and point out to Mr. Applebaum that we do have a few board seats that are open that we're deferring, and a couple we're trying to figure out what to do with. So we, please, please take a look at those. Thank you.
Great point. Nicole?
I just wanted to draw attention, the other applicants. I feel like this, this was one where, again, we just had a wealth of really good applicants. And so I just want to thank everyone for applying to this, this board as well, as well as Matt, but also Kristin, Catherine, Lila. Thank you.
Yeah, absolutely. Right. Seeing no other hands, I think we can give this to Stephen Hennessy by acclamation.
All right, thank you. Next is our Housing Authority Board. We have one seat open, which is seat five, and that is to appoint a member to a five-year term through 3/31/2029. We have Douglas Engel, Kimberly Lloyd, Lord, and Sarah Silver. We also wanted to note for the Housing Authority that they have internally appointed Mark Fear to the residential resident commissioner's seat.
Very good. Mark? Mark, can you speak? I think he just went black there.
Yeah, I'm going
Okay, we were a little hard to hear, but we got a nomination for Kimberly Lord. More or less.
Okay.
Love you turning this camera off, too.
Okay, Mark, let's give you a minute.
Kimberly Lord, yes.
There it is. There you said it.
Oh, yeah, that was better.
Can you hear me any better now? Okay.
Matt, did you want to make a nomination?
No, Mark said it. I, I also think that this, this bandwidth is like a walking Verizon commercial from the, from the 90s, so.
Mark, do you want to speak to your nomination?
I, I do, if anybody can hear me. Kimberly has served for about a year on BHP, and she's been in a, an outstanding commissioner. She's very valued by the staff of BHP, and I've enjoyed working with her, and I think she would do very well in a full term. And did any of that come across?
It all came through. Great.
Terrific.
Okay, great. And any other nominations? Seeing none, we'll give that to Kim Lord by acclamation. Kim, thank you for your service and for applying again, and also to Mark Fear for stepping up for the resident commissioner's seat.
Next, we have our Human Relations Commission. Seat one is to appoint a member to an unexpired two-year term through 3/31/26. And seat four is to appoint a member for a five-year term through 3/31/29. We have four applicants, Emily Locker, Erin Nyer, who also applied to the Transportation Advisory Board, Anna Pavagin Co., who has been a sitting member since 4/21/23, and Lawrence Roček.
Tara?
I'm feeling so active this year. I am going to nominate Erin Nyer.
Tina?
It's the same.
Okay. Any other nominations for the, and Tara, which seat is this for? There's a two-year seat and a five-year seat, but I can't hear you. You're muted.
I'm going to apply for seat four.
Okay. Nicole?
I would like to nominate Emily Lucre.
Okay. Not seeing any other hands. Tara, will you speak to it?
He has a wonderful heart. He cares deeply about people. I only have good things to say about that person. Erin is the type of person that you become a better person when you're with him. So for that reason, I think he would do a great job on the Human Relations Commission. That's one of the many reasons, but that's one.
Nicole, you want to speak to yours?
Yes, and I also think that Taysha had the same person I did. So I just wanted to offer Taysha, would you like to, to speak to Emily if she was what you were going to say, too? Okay, happy to then. So I just, I appreciate how passionate Emily is about social justice. You know, she does this in her work. I thought what was especially interesting here was the environmental
environmental justice work that she brings into, that, you know, she works for, I think, the Department of Energy. Just a really, you know, interesting perspective, because there's so many intersections between human rights and energy within that environmental justice realm. I really appreciated, you know, how much she was talking about relationship building as being trust building, recognizing that, you know, a lot of times relationships take time to build, that, you know, you can't get it, get it done right away. Anyway, just, just really appreciate the experience and the knowledge that she brings and this connection into the energy world and environmental justice.
Very good. And I think we have two great applicants here. So any other hands? Seeing none, are we alphabetical, Alicia?
Yes, we are, sir.
Right.
A quick question. I am, we have two applicants, we have two seats. Do, how would we do something like that?
Think, we'll start by voting, because it's possible that after one person is picked, there could be an additional nomination in the set for the second seat.
Oh.
So let's go ahead and vote.
Can we clarify which seat we're voting for, since the terms are different?
It was seat number four, the five-year term.
Okay, it's just the four.
It's seat number four, which is the five-year term. All in favor of Emily Lucre? I got, I got four. And Erin Nyer. I got five. So Erin Nyer is appointed to seat number four. Then if we can get nominations, please, for seat number one.
I'd like to nominate Emily.
Very good. Terry, you got your hand up?
I do. I don't, other people can talk, but Emily Lucre was a great candidate, so I'm going to nominate her.
Oh, Taisha already did.
Oh, she did? Oh, well, then I'll second it.
All right. Any others? All right, seeing none, then Emily Lucre is awarded seat number one by acclamation. And then I would just like to thank Anna Pavlinco for her service on the board in this last year. Appreciate everything that she's done.
Can I just go back? I just wanted to do some closeout comments on that as well, Mayor, if you, if you will. Just around why I voted for Erin for the two-year over the four. And honestly, I was confused on the method, so I'll do better next time. But my rationale was a two-year because there's just so many gifts that he has, and a five-year appointment is a long time. And I just think that there's some other areas that I would love to have his, that energy that he brings is not just in human relations, but there's some other areas. So alas, I'm I'm happy with where we landed, but I just wanted to clarify what the rationale of my voting was. And when I, when we made the arguments before, I would have said that, but I I got confused about what we were voting around. Thank you.
It's all good. Thanks for clarifying. Matt?
I'm just curious, maybe that, maybe that just confused me. Did Erin, Erin got seat four, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, I, I was confused. I thought I missed irritation. I just want to make sure we're good. Thank you.
All right, next we have our lead mark four. We are recruiting for seat four, which is to appoint a member to a five-year term through three thirty-one twenty-nine. We have Renee Goldblake, who has been a member since twenty twenty-three.
Nominations? Lauren?
I'm going to let Mark go, because he hasn't someone I feel like can walk.
Mark?
Or not. So I would like to nominate Renee. I think she's done a great job on this board and I'm excited for five more years.
And I apologize for my.
No worries, Mark. Great. Any objections? Then Renee has it by acclamation, and Renee, thank you for your service and your willingness to continue.
All right. Next, we have our Open Space Board of Trustees. We only have one seat, which is seat four, and that is to appoint a member for a five-year term through three thirty-one twenty-nine. We have ten applicants. Nicholas Calius, George Kraft, who also applied to the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, Vassa Dasan, Sarah Glenn, Alan has already been appointed, Jennifer Kay, Conrad, Conrad Lots, Alan Lewis, Wayland Lewis, who also applied to Prab and TAB, and Jennifer Robbins, who also applied again for Prab and the planning board.
Matt?
Thanks, Aaron. Like many boards that have and will continue to show up tonight, a bounty of riches on this one. But I would like to nominate Sarah Glenn, and I'll say a few words when it's ready, but I'd like to nominate Sarah.
Do you have the second page so we can, oh, wait, I see, it's on the other side. Oops, sorry.
Mark's hand was up, Mayor.
Okay, couldn't see it. Mark, go ahead.
Yes. Okay, once again. To Jennifer Kay, if anybody can hear me.
Ju- just barely, but we got the nomination. Any others?
Did that come through? I was nominating.
Yes, we got Jennifer Kay's nomination. Thank you. Any other? Not seeing any. So Matt, if you can speak.
Appreciate that. Yeah, I mean, great candidates all around, but where I think where Sarah, I think, separated was one, we have, we have to get some balance on this board. And so I think her nomination speaks to that. But, but I think more substantively, the experience Sarah brings in regenerative ag is vitally important. OSBT has long suffered an absence of, of some agricultural experience and expertise on that board. And given a third of our total open space acreage is agricultural land, I think it's a critical voice, especially as we're thinking about how to leverage our agricultural land in a more regenerative sequestration and really returning soil health back to, to our land is critically important. I think Sarah would offer a tremendous insight and help add that expertise as we sort of move forward, dealing with the impacts of climate, and certainly soil health being a critical function to our open space land. So I'm hopeful that we can get Sarah on board.
Good. Mark, you want to give it a try? We're having some trouble hearing you.
I, I know. I'm going to give it a try. Can you hear me at all?
Yes.
Okay. The reason I nominated Jennifer was the depth of her knowledge of environmental issues, her participation with many environmental groups, and simply her very, very extensive background in the field. I will note that, I agree with my colleague, Matt, that this was a plethora of riches here. We had many, many good candidates, and unfortunately, we can only have one. My one would be Jennifer Kay.
Thank you. Taisha?
Sorry, I missed the window on the, on, before you close for Sarah, just to say, in addition to the regenerative ag piece, which I could not echo Matt's comment strongly enough, especially since this is also an area that the county is focusing on. So there's some nice synergies there. But in addition, working in, in Namaste Solar, of course, and, and the energy intersect is also going to be really critical. When I was on Colorado Parks and Wildlife, there was a lot of demand for solar, and there was a lot of concern around the intersect on our open, open space, and especially the wildlife. And so having that expertise will be critical. And in addition, she brings experience in diversity, equity, and inclusion, which I think will be absolutely critical, as well as the health intersect as well. So, but I would argue, I, I agree with Mark with the wealth of riches, and Jennifer is also a strong candidate. Thank you.
Thanks. If I can just pause for a process note. So I think it's important for Mark to stay off videos, that we can hear him potentially. But I do not have enough windows to see his raised hand without the, the video on. So Alicia, if I could ask you to funnel his vote in to me, just audibly, I would appreciate it.
Of course, sir. Thank you.
Good. Thanks. And I agree, we, we have two, we have lots of fantastic applicants, and both of the nominated candidates are, are top-notch, and we'll be lucky to have either of them. Okay, we're in reverse alphabetical. And so all in favor of Jennifer Kay. I got Mark's visible hand. Right? We got one, and then Sarah Glenn? All right. Sarah gets that one.
Okay, I think Taisha might be frozen, and I'm not sure. I saw her hand get, get added into the vote. Not that it mattered, I just want to make sure that her vote was, was seen. I just saw her frozen on screen.
It, it does matter. But Taisha, I assume you're a Sarah vote, based on your.
Yes, thank you. Thanks, Matt.
Nicole?
Yeah, just have one, one comment on the previous slide. I just, I just wanted to note, I think it was Alan Lewis also had a lot of experience in the regenerative agriculture community. I just wanted to note that and acknowledge it. I think, you know, we're often trying to balance a bunch of different things on the boards, but I just wanted to make sure we weren't leaving him out as we were talking about the regenerative agriculture piece, because really, just I so appreciated hearing from him on that, and just grateful for the work he's doing on that in the community.
Excellent. All right, Alicia, Parks and Rec.
Parks and Rec Advisory Board, we have three seats available, and they are all for different terms. Seat two is to appoint a member to an unexpired three-year term through three thirty-one twenty-seven. Seat five is to appoint a member for a five-year term through three thirty-one twenty-nine. And seat seven is to appoint a member to an unexpired one-year term through three thirty-one twenty-five. We have nine candidates for this board. We have George Kraft, who also applied to other boards, Scott Graham, Wayland Lewis, who applied to the Transportation Advisory Board as well, Todd Lockwood, Larry McKeough, Eric Rafini, Dana Rice, Jennifer Robbins, and Annie Roshi.
And Annie was appointed to the EAB, so is not in the running for this one. All right, I got lots of hands. Nicole?
I was just going to ask first, which, which one are we starting with? Sorry if I missed that.
Why don't we start with a five-year term?
Thank you. I think somebody else had a hand up before me, then I will let them nominate first.
Okay. Tara?
I was quick on that Jeopardy. I'm going to nominate Jenny Robbins.
Good. Matt?
I've just got screaming children making racket in the background, so sorry about that. Double snow days. I would like to nominate Wayland Lewis.
Tina?
I'm always too late on my hand raise.
Okay. Any other nominations? All right, seeing none. Tara, do you want to speak to Jenny?
This is Jenny's second time that she is applying for the Parks and Rec Board. Her, she's very strong with youth. She cares so much about giving them, making them a place in the Parks and Rec world. She cares very much about our parks. She's a great thinker, and I think she would be a wonderful candidate, a wonderful addition to the board.
Matt?
Yeah, so I'm going to nominate Wayland Lewis. You know, Wayland has been a, I mean, virtually ever-present in, in Ken community, it seems. He's born and raised here, but also just, you know, very engaged in our community and has a real extensive network from which I think, one, he can hear from folks, but also communicate the great work that, that Parks and the city are doing. And just, you know, kind of a salt-of-the-earth person, and I think has shown a large commitment to, to engaging in our community. So I'd love to see Wayland, Wayland make it here.
Great. Other thoughts on the nominees? We got Tina?
Yeah, I just wanted to add about both nominations, that Jenny also lives in the Gun Barrel area, and we don't always have representation from outside the city. And I think it's particularly important when we think about how we cite services. And then the other piece, well, it didn't come up a lot with any of the applicants. And by the way, we have a wonderful pool of applicants. The parks includes the civic area. And when I think about connections to the civic area, I think Wayland has an incredibly deep relationship with the civic area. So I'm very excited about both of them, but I wanted to mention that about both the candidates, since it wasn't brought up.
Excellent. Tina, so Taisha, did you want to speak?
I was just going to speak on how much more challenging this, this just became from that previous comment. Thank you, Tina. It was supposed to be, we're making two very strong arguments. All right, that's.
I'll go ahead and call on myself and say that I think both of the nominees would make excellent choices. Both have been involved deeply in our community. Wayland's been around for a long time. Jenny's done some, some great things the last few years. I'll, in this round, I'm going to give the nod to Jenny because of her experience with youth recreation, in particular with her. She talks a lot about her kids and how much time she spends, you know, getting them engaged actively with different sports and activities. So that's, will be the nature of my vote. Are any, not, any other hands? Seeing none. Alicia, I lost track. Where, where are we going this time?
Right now, for sir.
All right, all those in favor of Wayland Lewis? I got one. Jenny Robbins? Looks like eight, or Taisha, there you go. Taisha's the eighth. Okay. So Jenny Robbins gets the seat number five, the five-year term. Now, let's do seat number two, the three-year term. I had Tara, Nicole, Matt, I believe.
I'll let Matt take this one, because I'm sure he's going to nominate who I was going to nominate. So go ahead, Matt.
Okay. We'll, we'll, we'll give a second, second try to my friend Wayland, Wayland Lewis. Already said my piece about Wayland, but yeah, nomination for the three-year.
I got Nicole and then Taisha.
Yes, I wanted to nominate Larry McKeough. I, I think it's so rare that we get anybody from our manufactured home communities on our boards and commissions. I feel like this is a community in particular that's wonderful to try to get engaged in our work, especially for Parks and Rec. I think there's, there's a lot of connections there in the work that Parks and Rec is trying to do in our manufactured home communities. Anyway, so I think this would be, you know, he's eminently qualified, and I think just brings that additional perspective and connection to a community that we're really trying to reach through Parks and Rec and many of the programs there.
Taisha?
Sorry, that was going to be mine.
Tara? You're muted.
I want to also speak about Wayland Lewis. He, we all, those that know him know how much he loves the outdoors. He loves the environment. He loves our parks. He loves trees and everything that's in the parks, and he loves our community, and I would love to give him this opportunity to serve our community, the wonderful person that he is. Thanks. And that isn't saying that everybody is a wonderful. Everybody's wonderful.
Good. And then we will have another seat after this one. So not seeing any, any other hands raised?
No, Mark's, Mark's hand is up, Aaron.
Oh, it just came up, sir. It just came up when I looked down.
Mark?
Yeah, and the interest and necessity of being brief, I just want to second what was said about Wayland. I think this would be a great opportunity for him, and I think he would do an excellent job. So I'm going to be supporting him this round.
Okay. We got reverse alpha. So Larry McKeough, in favor? I got three. Wayland Lewis. I got five. Ryan, I didn't see your hand.
Sorry, I was, I'm so sorry. I didn't vote. I meant, I actually.
Sorry, I was, I'm so sorry. I didn't vote. I meant, I actually meant to vote for Larry on the second, on the middle, sorry.
No worries. So it was four for Larry and five for Wayland. So Wayland gets the seat number two, the three-year term. And now we have seat number seven with the one-year term. Nominations? Nicole?
Do what I was gonna let someone else do. I will nominate Larry and y'all already heard what I had to say about him.
Good. Tara?
I'm gonna nominate Eric because he had a great interview and he's involved in not only pools, but also he was a park ranger and he is very involved in the environment, I think, if I remember the EPA. And he's very involved with his children in parks and so I like him very much.
Very good. I'll go ahead and call on myself, which is that I thought both Larry and Eric have a wealth of experience to bring and information and experience with different user groups and but for, I think, a lot of the reasons that Nicole spoke to before, I'll be supporting her in this round.
Dying.
Oh, Taysha, you're.
There's your hot mic.
Got a hot mic.
I'm dying. This is so hard, y'all. You told me how hard this is gonna be, but it's just so hard. So I just wanna say thank you, all the applicants. All right.
It doesn't get any easier. That's true. Okay, all in favor of Larry McKeough. Raise your hand. I got four. And all in favor of Eric Rafini. I got five. So Eric is appointed to seat number seven. Okay. Planning board?
Yes, sir. Planning board. We have also three seats available for appointment with the planning board. Seat five and six are both to appoint members for five-year terms through 3/31/29. And seat seven is to appoint a member to a unexpired one-year term through 3/31/25. We have eight applicants. Charles Brock, Chester Harvey, Stephen has already been appointed, Mark McIntyre, Mason Roberts, Jennifer has also been appointed, Maureen Ryan, and Claudia Hansen Thiem.
Great. And so let's start with seat number five, the five-year term. I've got Nicole and Matt, then Tina.
Thank you. Following Tara's lead here, I'm getting my hand up first. I wanted to nominate Claudia Thiem. I think, you know, her kind of professional planning background, her work as a community organizer, she's a parent of young children. I think she's really gonna hit the ground running with this position. And, you know, one of the, it almost feels like her whole life has been building toward putting her on planning board at this moment in time, but she said something during her interview that really stood out for me. I'm just gonna paraphrase her, but she was talking about having a brave commitment to a better future. And I just, you know, for parents, I think we're thinking about that better future all the time. It just really struck me and I'm sorry, I jumped in with saying the things before getting to the nominations. So zip it now.
Okay, no worries. Matt?
I was gonna nominate Claudia as well, so thank you, Nicole.
Tina?
I'm Mark McIntyre.
And Tara?
I am going to nominate Charles Brock.
Okay. Tina, do you want to speak to yours? Oh, wait.
You know what? You know what? I'm gonna wait and I'm gonna go with Mark McIntyre. I changed my mind.
Okay.
Am I allowed? Yeah, okay.
Sure. Yeah, you can retract the nomination. Lauren, did you want to make an additional nomination?
I wanted to nominate Mason Robert. Oh, we're just voting on, I'll retract for now.
Okay. We're getting, this is called foreshadowing, is what we're getting right now of later rounds. Okay, so.
Wait, I changed my mind. I'm gonna put up Charles Brock. I'm gonna do it. Don't be mad at me.
Only slightly annoyed. No, you're fine, Tina. Tara, you're fine. Tina, did you want to speak to your nomination?
Sure. I've known Mark McIntyre for a long time. He's a great advocate in the city and he's obviously already on the board. I think I hear he's doing a great job. I also just like the way he interacts with people with so much kindness and empathy. It's something that conversations with him tend to be uplifting and I feel that that's the kind of sentiment that we need in our community more than ever.
Good. Tara, do you want to speak to Chuck Brock?
I know Chuck for a long time because we served on parks together and he's a brilliant and marvelous candidate who knows a lot about this subject and many others, and I think he'd make a great contribution. Also, we have so many great candidates that I have to agree with Taysha. This is a very, this moment is a very tough moment right now, but I do love Chuck.
Matt?
Thanks. I'm in an odd place to sort of split a difference here. For one, I think Claudia's gonna be absolutely tremendous. Would love to see her on a five-year term, but it's not to diminish that I will immediately want to get whoever gets it of any of those two. I want Mark also to make sure that he continues on for his tremendous great work. So I would love to see both of them on and we'll get another chance to do that regardless of who comes through.
For sure. So I'll go ahead and call on myself and speak to all three of the nominees because they're all fantastic people and I can't resist. So just in alphabetical order, Chuck Brock has done amazing work on our Parks Board for the last few years. Really appreciate his service and also his advocate, his advocacy for alternative transportation methods and he had a fantastic application here. Mark has served very ably on the planning board for the last couple of years and I've learned a lot from, on some of the decisions from his analysis of those and brings a real depth of experience and analysis to these questions. And then Claudia Thiem is, I think, as knowledgeable as anyone else in our community about planning matters and our code and our comp plan and would be extremely helpful for the comprehensive plan updates going forward. So we are not going wrong here at all. I'm looking forward to casting multiple votes on these three seats here. Okay. Any other hands? All right, seeing none. Alicia, what direction are we, please?
Reverse.
Okay, so we're gonna start with Claudia Hansen Thiem. Right? I got four. What, five? Okay, got five there. And just to finish it out, Mark McIntyre? I got three and then Chuck Brock. All right, so Claudia gets the five-year term, seat number five. Congratulations, Claudia. Matt?
I'm ready to go on the next one there, Aaron, so you say the word.
Go for it.
All right. Well, congratulations, Claudia. I'm gonna turn around and immediately nominate Mark McIntyre as, and I'll say my reasons for that that haven't already been said if needed.
Good. Lauren?
I'd like to nominate Mason Roberts. I think he brings a slightly different perspective to planning board. I really appreciate his the social determinance of health side that he can bring, you know, as we're facing a lot of chronic illnesses, how we design to make our cities as healthy as possible, I think is a really important piece. I also think that he has shown to be good at engaging with people on a variety, on issues, no matter where they stand on them. And I think that that is also really helpful as a planning board member.
I don't, if you don't mind me adding on Mark, you know, Mark's experience in the transportation realm was instrumental with TAB and I think that he brings a unique mix of that transportation understanding from his time on TAB to planning and especially as we move into the comp planning process and the torrential direction that council's moving in, where we're really finding ways to mix and make sure we're thoughtfully thinking of our transportation needs in synergy with our planning needs and Mark really bridges that gap well and especially as we move into the comp planning process. And I even say on top of that, if some of these state bills pass, we're gonna be having to figure out that transit-oriented connections to development from a state level and I think he's gonna provide some great leadership when we have to start making those changes here locally.
Tara?
I just want to say that I love them both and this is killing me. But Mark did such a great, first of all, his interview was fantastic and he did such a great job on his first term that I would just love to give him the opportunity to do this again.
Good. Nicole and then Taysha.
I think Taysha had her hand up first.
Taysha then.
Thank you. So I absolutely agree with the strength that Mark brings and would be happy to nominate him for seat seven. But for this term, I really believe that having Mason there is gonna be absolutely critical, somebody who understands big, big data, big, big, complex intersectional data, though his inference is formal interests in or experiences in public education. There's a variety of other topics that he has accelerated on over the years as he's been following what's been happening in the city of Boulder. And actually, as I was on the campaign trail with somebody who not only served as our treasurer, but also was on our policy team. And I was always struck by if there was an area where he didn't know as much or have as much experience, he's a great researcher and that's what great researchers do. They're able to not only look at the academic and policy work that is out there and the research that is out there, but also doing the human work and the relational work as well, which is an area that I think he excels. I also love the idea of bringing some younger energy to the policy board. And as far as, you know, having a variety of expertise on the planning board, I'm grateful for the direction this council is moving in to allow and accelerate and engage more of our boards instead of leaning heavily on one or two boards. And so as you saw in the last planning discussion we had, not only do we invite planning to the table, but we also invited transportation and the environmental advisory board. We want all hands on back when we are deciding complex situations and it is time that we move beyond just looking at the planning board as the major mega board. And I appreciate the work that has been done, but the amount of expertise that is needed for this time where we are facing both climate and cultural issues, I want somebody who has that expertise. But as I said, you know, both of these candidates are strong and whoever doesn't make it, I will be happy to nominate them for seat number seven. Thank you.
Thanks, Nicole.
Yes, thank you. I will echo and plus one everything that Lauren and Taysha have to say about Mason. A couple of things that I'd add, he has an incredible eye for detail. I think that that for planning board in particular is a really useful skill. The other thing, you know, we talk a lot about missing middle housing. Well, Mason lives in the missing middle housing. So I think having that, you know, somebody who's living in, you know, condo townhome can really be valuable and bring a nice perspective there. And I also just want to lift up his willingness to serve. So he has applied for the last two years and every year we have said, Mason Roberts, you are an amazing candidate. Not quite yet, come back next year. And the idea of doing that for a third time does not feel really good because he's a very well-qualified candidate who brings exceptionally, who, as you know, Taysha and Lauren said, brings some different knowledge that is exceptionally used at this moment in time. And that's not to say anything about Mark. Totally appreciate Mark's service, five years on TAB, two years on planning board. And I just, the graciousness of him even in his interview where, you know, he said, you know, look, there are so many good applicants here. If it's not me, that is okay. I just, it takes a real leader to kind of recognize that too. So also, you know, really happy to see Mark nominated in the next round too, but I will be voting for Mason in this one.
Thanks, Ryan.
I'll try to make one comment here for planning board and see if that works. Just an incredible wealth of applicants. I'm blown away. So first, I'd just like to say that Chuck has been such an incredible asset, Boulder. He's a board member, as a member that cares about the subject matter of other boards deeply, transportation. I want to recognize that. I also want to say Chester had such an impressive interview and I have talked to multiple people, including not city council members who have said, hey, did you see the video of Chester? And I just hope we can find ways to involve Chester more. I know we're only on the second three, so, but I'm just excited to do it. So I really hope we can keep Chester engaged and find ways to work with you. Okay, so Mark McIntyre is, I worked with him while I was a TAB member with Mark and he, in his role on planning board now, has become a kind of expert in one of the most important things that we need help with, which is how to interpret the vague transportation demand management part of our code. And I think he has just been very, very craftful in working with applicants in the board. And I think we so need Mark for now on the board. Mason, I would just like to associate my comments with Nicole, Taysha, Lauren. I think he'd be great. And I, so to me, what I'm coming down to here is a little bit of how to make a tiebreaker. And I think looking at seniority and time left is important here. So I think Mason, he's not done this yet. I think he deserves, should have. Boulder, I should say Boulder deserves for Mason to have the five years. And then I would hope for Mark to be in the one-year one. He gave us permission to do that, Mark. Thank you for that. And also, we've got so much work to do this year and hopefully we'll see what happens, but we've got big reforms coming for code. Hopefully that we're gonna need to, I, on it to get. I think those are my comments. Thanks.
Mayor, Mark has his hand up.
Thank you, Mark.
Thank you. I'm going to go with Mark McIntyre for this slot. We do have a loose tradition of when someone performs good service in a short term on a board, we elevate them to a full term on the board. And I don't see any particular reason to deviate from that practice. And I don't think anybody has any real complaint about the service that he's rendered. So that's the direction I'm going to go on this particular vote.
Thanks, Nicole.
Yeah, I just, Mark, to your comment, there were a couple of times where we've already done that tonight and I just want to make sure that folks know that I think, I don't know if I'm speaking on behalf of everybody, certainly will speak on behalf of myself. The places where we did not do that tonight, it is not because I have any concerns about anybody's service on the board. I think the folks who did not continue on were, you know, doing great. I think we just have a really exceptional pool of applicants. So just want to be crystal clear at least about me and I see some other folks nodding there as well, but there were some folks we did that to tonight and I just want to make sure they all know it is, it's not because we think you weren't doing a good job.
Yeah, agreed. I'll call on myself. So I spoke to Mark earlier and I'm very excited that Mason has applied. He's very knowledgeable in these areas, had an excellent application and interview. And to echo the comment, the positive comments of my colleagues about him and his willingness to step up and serve over the last couple of years as well. So, you know, nothing is certain in this world, but I do see the person getting the one-year term as extremely likely based on the caliber of applicants here to then get a full term next year. So given that Mark's previous service, I actually feel like giving him the five-year term is, actually would give Mason more time. And so I'll be supporting Mark in this round and looking forward to voting for Mason for the next seat, which I would fully expect next year to get re-upped if he is willing. All right, seeing no hands, we will start alphabetically this time and start with Mark McIntyre. So raise your hand. Got a five here. Mason Roberts. We got a four. So that's seat number six to Mark McIntyre and let's finish it out. Tara, Matt?
Well, since it's been a Mason love fest, I am gonna nominate Mason because I love him and he's, one thing that hasn't been said about Mason, which I want the entire community to know, is that he goes across the aisle. And when it comes to planning board, to me, that's a really important quality and to add all the other reasons on to Mason, I'm gonna add this reason as well. I do want to say about Chester and Chuck, your interviews were phenomenal and I hope that we see you. And I hope that we see you again soon.
Matt? Yeah, I'm going to certainly jump on on Mason's wagon here for all the things that were said. And I think, Aaron, your point was so well taken that there's an opportunity here for Mason to serve more than than a five year term. And I really look forward to him serving here this one and then getting his, his feet wet and then, you know, getting another five years. I think he's going to be a tremendous asset to, to planning board for, for quite some time into our community, even beyond his service on planning board. Tina?
Yep, I'm, I'm going to be supporting Mason as well, but I just did want to recognize the applications of, of all the people, but particularly some of the specificity of Charles Brock's ideas about ways to achieve some different types of housing. And particularly some ideas around coming up with pre-developed plans that people could use to eliminate some of the development costs for middle income earners. His knowledge and the professionalism of his application, I think, was just phenomenal. And so I hope that even before the next round of boards, there are other ways that someone like him and Chester could be plugged into these processes because their knowledge is simply invaluable.
Well said. Seeing, oh, Lauren?
Well, I just thought I'd mention, you know, related to Tina's comment, that in case any of these applicants are listening, design advisory positions are still open. And we would love to have some of these people maybe consider applying for the design advisory board.
Very good. Seeing no other hands and no other nominations, Mason Roberts gets seat number seven by acclamation. Looking very forward to Mark and Mason and Claudia's service on the board.
All right, our transportation advisory board, another board that has three seats available. We have seat one, which is to appoint a member to an unexpired two-year term through three thirty-one twenty-six. Seat number two is to appoint a member to another unexpired term, but that one is for three years. And that term is through three thirty-one twenty-seven. Seat number four is to appoint a member for a five-year term through three thirty-one twenty-eight. We have eleven candidates. Norman Anderson, Mike Duffy, Sean Haney, Daniel Howard, Darcy Kitchen, Michael Desama, Whalen's already been appointed. We have Ann McHannon, McHan, Michael Mills, Erin Nyer, and Jennifer Osh. We also want to make a special note to council that this appointment, one appointment must be with a gender identity other than woman.
Great. So thanks for all that. And Erin Nyer and Waylon Lewis have already been appointed to other boards.
Erin's going to, okay.
So why don't we start with nominations for seat number four, the five-year term? We've got Nicole and Tara.
I wanted to nominate Jennifer Oaks, who is an activist in the disability community. Jennifer, sorry, I'm doing it again. Speech is after. Thank you. I forget.
Tara?
I am going to nominate Darcy Kitchen. Is that her last name? I really liked her interview, especially that represents walkers, so it would give diversity in that way on the board.
Nicole, do you like to speak?
Yes, absolutely. So Jennifer is a wheelchair user, is very connected to the disability community. And I know that we are, our staff are often going out to the disability community to get input on the projects that we're doing. And there is nothing like having a seat at the table. For me, having somebody who uses a mobility assistive device on our transportation advisory board is long overdue. I think, you know, Jennifer is a brilliant person. I think will bring a really good perspective to all of the projects that we are asking for input. And staff is asking for input from transportation advisory board on, and would love to see somebody from the disability community on this board. It is, it is something that absolutely restricts people's transportation in our city. And the more we can figure out what the gaps are and how we can address them, I think the better off we'll all be.
Thanks. Tara, did you want to speak more? No? Okay, Ryan?
I'd like to speak in support of Jen. We have done so much work over the last few years on transportation reform and investments and new commitments. There's so much happening. And so much so that I think we're at the precipice of really looking at serious code changes this year. We already know that staff is planning to bring us forward something on around parking and sounds like probably TDM. And I think we are going to get the most from these initiatives, reform initiatives, looking at red, bill fundamental policy around transportation. If we are able to bring forward voices that make things visible, that aren't easiest, easy for us to see, haven't been easy for us to see, or understand. And so I, I really like the idea of Jen and.
Thanks. Let's see, I'll go ahead and call myself. I'm looking forward to hopefully appointing both Darcy and Jen to the transportation advisory board this evening. I think Nicole and Ryan, you both spoke eloquently about what Jen will provide to the board, which I think is really, really important. And then I wanted to mention that I've, I've worked with Darcy over the years on transportation issues and just found her to be incredibly knowledgeable in that area about all the latest trends that's in her professional work and her educational work. And also just that she has a compassion and empathy for people in many different transportation situations. So looking forward to hopefully appointing both of them tonight. With that, I believe we're reverse alphabetical. So all in favor of Jennifer Oaks? Okay, I got one, two, three, four, five, six. And then Darcy Kitchen. Yeah. Two, so I may have miscounted there somewhere. Maybe it was seven in the first round. Okay, round two, if we could do seat, seat number two, the seat number two, the three-year term. And Matt? Thanks, Aaron. I'm going to pull, pull immediately back Darcy into the mix and nominate Darcy Kitchen for seat two. Tara?
Oops. I love Michael Adesma's interview, and so I think, I think he's a wonderful candidate and I'd like to acknowledge him.
By the way, we got the echo coming back. Okay, Nicole?
I'm just going to mix it up a little bit. I just wanted to Ann Mahone. I think Ann is somebody else who is bringing connections to community through her work with Boulder County, some other groups in the community. And Anne Marie is a younger person who I think would, would bring a lot to TAB. She was working, sorry, I started doing it again and I apologize. It's, in my defense, it's, it's almost 10 o'clock where I am. Anyway.
I'll say Nicole, between the almost 10 where I'm to and the cold that I'm fighting, I'm fading out here myself. So Tara, you nominated Michael, right?
I did.
Yeah, so if we could get Michael highlighted, please, on the thing. And Tara, do you want to speak more? I'm sorry, there are two Michaels. It was Michael Adesma that Tara nominated.
No, I spoke.
Okay. Nicole, do you want to finish out?
Can we stop the echo or is not possible? Okay, great. I just want to say that I think his experience is great. He has a great amount of experience. And again, his interview was very succinct, and I think he would just do a marvelous job on this board.
Very good.
Sorry, I can't figure out why. Anyway. But yeah, just to finish up on Anne Marie, Anne Marie is somebody who came to the community a few years ago during the pandemic, has done a lot of biking around as well as trying to live without a car, one car household, younger person. I think there's a lot of great stuff there. But I also just want to note, Michael Adesma, I've kind of seen firsthand from when my, my kids were at Casey, the work that he does with youth especially. I mean, he's, he's also fabulous and wonderful. I'm noting that we have to appoint at least one member with gender identity other than women as well in this. So anyway, just, yeah, sorry, I don't, I think I just muddled the waters a little bit more. They're all great.
Aaron went dark, so maybe I could take liberty to speak to, there he is. Do you mind if I say a few words about Darcy?
Please do. I've been told I may have been the problem, so I got a headset here instead, which hopefully will fix the echo issue. So go ahead, Matt.
Awesome. Thanks, Aaron. Yeah, so similar to, to Aaron's point about working with Darcy for, for a number of years. You know, Darcy's a person that, you know, no matter kind of what event you go to, you see Darcy. And, you know, kind of another ever-present figure in our community. But more importantly, I think she, she has an ability to just sort of, there's an infectiousness about communicating with Darcy, which I think in a group setting is just, she just brings people in. Like, you just want to like have a conversation. And I think when we're dealing with some of the real critical stuff around transportation and certainly interacting with community, I, I think in terms of an ambassador for the work, I think Darcy is kind of second to none in being able to do that. And so I really like the way that she'll be able to approach this and hopefully we can get her on board.
Ryan?
Also like to say something in support of Darcy for this round. Darcy is a functional multimodal expert with her, with her professional focus on transportation demand management. And that is something we could really benefit from. And she also has written a book on urban hiking and so many other things. And she's, she's an organizer of, I don't, I don't know other individual organizers who do so much with active transportation. And so she also has a bird's eye view of what's going on at BTC. So I just think she would be a, a, a very well-rounded, professional, technical addition to TAB.
You know what? I'm going to pull Michael for the next seat. I'm going to pull out for that. You've convinced me.
Michael Adesma's nomination was withdrawn, so we have Darcy Kitchen and Ann Mahone on the table. All right, we're in alphabetical order this time, so raise your hand for Darcy Kitchen if you would like. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven. Ann Mahone. Got one. So Darcy Kitchen is appointed to seat number two. All right, we have one spot left, which is seat number one, the two-year term. So reopen the nominations. Matt?
I'd like to nominate Mike Mills, and I'll say a few words in a little bit.
Nicole?
Just had a clarifying question. This one needs to be gender identity other than women. Is that correct?
Yes, yes, it is. Matt, would you like to speak to it?
Absolutely. You know, Mike Mills is, has also been ever-present in, in, in our community and just been really committed to certainly bike safety and our bike infrastructure. And, you know, he's, he's one of those that is soft-spoken, but when he has something to say, it's usually quite profound. And so I love that he's just a really strong listener and then decides to add his input that's really thoughtful and usually comes from a place of deep knowledge and also extensive listening. And so I think Mike would fit really, really well in TAB for a lot of those skillsets and in a lot of his experience for, for over the years.
Agreed. Tara?
I really like both Michaels, so I'm torn. Tough night. But I'm going to bring up Michael Adesma and whoever wins, I like them both.
Good. And I'll call on myself. I like both the Michaels as well. We got an embarrassment of Michaels. Sorry, not embarrassment. They're both great. That was the wrong thing to say. So I will be supporting Mike Mills this time around for the reasons that, that Matt said. But also just that I've been really impressed at how he has gotten involved in the transportation world over the last couple of years locally. I'm at many transportation events, related events, and Mike is very often there, listening and learning and engaging with the current issues facing our community on transportation. Nicole?
Yes, again, really, really, really challenging. And just for, for Michael Adesma, you know, having, in his interview too, he was referring to his outreach and connections to communities and families with young children especially, who are not often brought into our transportation thinking. And so I just, I really, really, really appreciate both Michaels as well and their, their work in the community. And I think for this one, for the connections to, to families and kids and the work that he does in outreach in the community, I'm going to go with Michael Adesma.
Okay, seeing no other hands raised, we're, oh, Ryan?
We're, sorry, I think, so we're, we're down to the two Michaels for the third seat and we're making, we're making comments about that.
That is correct, yes.
Things are slow and they're fast and slow. Okay, this is, this is kind of excruciating. So many, so many good candidates to bring so much in so many ways. Ann is not on this one. I just, I just wanted to recognize Ann. I thought Ann was great, and I hope, I would love, love to see more Ann. So this is very hard. I, I, I would, I would think it's hard for me. I might have to flip the coin myself here. But I think Michael Mills, I would, I would like to have the number three seat. He's been, they've both been very active in all of our community engagement around making our streets safer. I've gone to know Michael and he's, he's great. I just, I put him in my number three. It's, it's by a hair.
Tough choices. Okay, we're in reverse alphabetical, so raise your hand if you would like for Mike Mills, Michael Mills. We got one, two, three, four, five. And Michael Adesma. We have four. Shows the challenge of the decision. Okay, great. Well, Darcy and Michael and Jennifer, thrilled to have you on the TAB.
All righty, thank you, sir. Next, we have our University Hill Commercial Area Management Commission. We have two seats available for appointment. Seat three is to appoint a member to an unexpired four-year term through three thirty-one twenty-eight. And seat four is to appoint a member for a five-year term through three thirty-one twenty-nine. Both seats must be a property owner or representative, and all three candidates meet those requirements. Trent Bush, who was a sitting member since 2021, Michelle Pentigras, and Anika Powell.
Thank you, Alicia. Let's do seat number four first, the five-year term. Nominations.
I can go ahead and make one here if you don't mind. Sorry, I forgot to raise my hand. Sorry, pressed the wrong button.
I got, I got.
I think I got this one. I'm going to nominate Danica Powell.
Matt?
I was just pressing the wrong buttons left and right there. I'd like to nominate Trent. Yeah, Trent Bush.
Okay, Mark, would you like to speak to yours? Sorry, go ahead.
I'm going to be very brief just because of the difficulties. I think her resume speaks for herself, the breadth of her knowledge about business issues generally. herself, the breadth of her knowledge about business issues generally and the Hill. I think she'll make an excellent member of the new camp seat.
Matt?
So one of the things you'll know about Trent is that every, anything that's happening on the Hill, he's there. And you'll find him at the sink, you'll find him just about anywhere on the Hill. And I think that speaks to his commitment. And I, and not to say that I don't love Danica, and I want her on this as well, on this nomination, I'm gonna vote for Trent. Next one, I'm gonna support Danica. But nonetheless, Trent's just been ever-present, and I think been a sort of a stalwart and steadfast in his support of the commercial area on the Hill, and has been just very active for quite a long time. There's just a few, just only so few businesses up there. And so to stay in that game for a long time and continue even through some of the hardships, the fact that Trent's been able to do that, I think, has been quite tremendous and a testament of his work. I'd love to see him get a full term out of this.
Lauren?
Like Matt, I think both of these candidates are really, really, all of our candidates were great. I will just say that because the term that Trent served started in 2021, even if we were to appoint him to the shorter four-year term, he would still be getting more than a five-year term overall. And so that's playing a little bit into my thinking about voting for Danica for this first round. Thank you.
All right. Any other hands? Seeing none, I think we're alphabetical this time, so raise your hand if you'd like for Trent Bush. I got one, and Danica Powell. I got eight. Okay, so Danica has seat number four. If we can turn to seat number three now, please, the four-year term. Nominations. Matt?
Nominate Trent.
Again, any others? Seeing none, and Matt, you've already spoken. So if people are comfortable, we can appoint Trent by acclamation to seat number three. Oh, Nicole, sorry, moving too fast.
No, it's, well, it's all good. I can say this now or later. Since I'm muted, I'll just say it now. I know Michelle Pendergrass, our kids went to daycare together, and I just, I so appreciate seeing her name in here. She was wonderfully organized back then, a great, you know, leader in the kind of small business community. Appreciate, you know, that she applied. And I think this is another person that, you know, we haven't said this yet for anyone this time, but I really hope, you know, that she'll come back and apply again in the future. Because I just, she's a wonderful, wonderful person, very organized, cares so much about the community and small businesses, and would just love to see her do something in the future.
Well said. Now, go ahead and finish the sentence, then by acclamation, we will appoint Trent Bush to seat number three. Alicia, are you muted?
Thank you, sir. This is our last board for tonight. It is our Water Resources Advisory Board. We have one seat, which is seat four, to appoint a member for a five-year term through 3/31/29. We have one applicant, and that is Catherine Bridges.
Matt?
I was, yeah, so I'm gonna nominate Catherine Bridges. Seeing no other candidates, I'll just speak now real quick. You know, no other candidates, but Catherine was a great interview, but I think also she was part of the City of Boulder family for some time. And so great to see that Catherine left us, but has come right back into our orbit. So glad to have Catherine back in this age, and I think be a tremendous asset in addition to RAB and the continued great work that that board will do for our community.
Okay, any other thoughts on that? Seeing none, we will appoint Catherine Bridges by acclamation. And I'll just echo that her application was very strong, and it's amazing the quality of folks that we get on our Water Resources Advisory Board. Catherine, very, very much included. Appreciate her service coming, coming and serving the community. Okay, so that brings us to the end. We got two items of business left here. One of them that we don't have is going back to the Boulder Junction District, because we did appoint Jen Oaks to TAB, so we're gonna have to reopen that one as well. So the two things are to formalize these appointments with a motion, and then to talk about timing on the reopening of boards. So I might invite a motion to get us through that. Matt?
Without seeing specific motion language, I'll go with my gut here. I'll make a motion to certify the nominations for our boards and commissions.
Great. The language I see is approve the appointments as elected.
There it is. Didn't see any language, so I was hoping to help me out there. All right, so approve the appointments as elected.
Right.
That's our motion.
Great. Do you have a second?
Second.
I had Taysha's hand before I heard you, Lauren. Taysha, do you wanna go ahead?
I was seconding.
We have a motion in a second. Can we do a show of hands here, Alicia?
I would prefer a roll call, sir.
Yes, ma'am. Let's have a roll call.
All right, thank you. We'll start the roll call for the approval of the 2024 Boards and Commissions appointments as elected with Councilmember Weiner.
Yes.
Adams.
Yes.
Benjamin?
Yes.
Mayor Brockett?
Yes.
Councilmember Folkerson.
I would like to appoint so many more of them, but I will just go with yes for now.
Marquess?
Yes.
Shuhar?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Spear?
Yes.
And Councilmember Waller?
Yes.
The 2024 Boards and Commission appointments as designated are hereby approved unanimously. And we want to thank all of you for an engaging and efficient appointment process. So thank you.
Thanks, although we did go over time, I'll just note, but semi-efficient.
It was a lot. It was a lot.
Yeah, there was a lot of people this year, and just, we were so blessed by the quality of the applicants. There were so many good people, and you heard us over and over again, having this kind of gut-wrenching decisions to make, choosing between so many qualified people. So congratulations to the people that we appointed, and just thanks so much to everyone who applied. And if you were not appointed, please do consider applying in a future year, because we, the City Boulder needs your help. That's, and your assistance with all the challenges facing our community. And with that, so the one thing is that we do need to reopen some of these boards, as we talked about before. I'm hearing from some staff members that it would be helpful to come back within a few weeks to hopefully we can drum up some applications. So I wonder if we might look to the maybe four- to six-week timeframe in terms of an opening. I mean, a month is a kind of a round number, and maybe we can recruit in networks and ask people to beat the bushes. How would people feel about that timeframe?
So, I've got a process, I've got a, can I ask a process question before we get there, Aaron?
Go ahead.
So I, and maybe this is a question for Lauren and Tara on Boards and Commissions. Right, Lauren, your colleague on Boards and Commissions is Tara, is that correct? Yeah, so we, there's like, I think, a recommendation kind of hanging out there about what we're gonna do to reform the B Jads. And I'm just wondering, like, will that recommendation maybe come to us? And maybe, can we accelerate it coming to us before the four-to-six-week mark so that we can actually, like, kind of solve this thing before we open up the appointment process and go through all that? I feel like we kind of are going in reverse order. If we've got this thing here that we can use to fix it, then maybe we can just go ahead and pursue that. And then let the, let all that sort of settle out on the backend, and just hate to go through this process, only to then reform the whole thing eight weeks later, right? So I just want a question on that.
So Matt, if you don't mind if I respond, having been involved with those boards a little bit for a long time, it would require code changes to reform those processes. So it is unfortunately not something we could do in the same timeframe as recruiting new board members. It's gonna be a longer-term fix, as much as I wish we could do something quick and simple. And I saw Teresa nodding, I think, so I think I got that right. But if only, right, Tara?
I was just gonna say, we tried, Lauren and I tried, and we were told that it required code changes, and so we can't seem to rush that one. But I do think we can try to do the, I think we should try to, for the four-to-six weeks, and then if that doesn't work out, we still have the mid-year. But some of the boards are really desperate for board members, so I'd like to try.
Brian?
These two Boulder Junction boards are super exciting, and I think people don't know all of the great stuff underneath. So that's, that's the first thing. I think once people know, they might get excited. So my question is, is there a way to reach the applicants to this, to the boards for tonight, and give them some kind of a, I don't know, a shortcut or an easy way in, maybe that's not possible. I'm just thinking, we've, there's, we've got this imbalance with not enough board seats, people aren't getting seats, but then we can't fill the boards. So is there any way to kind of give like a fast track or with that, I don't know, get in the way of appropriate process?
I mean, Alicia, you, we could reach out to them, correct? Like, we could say, you know, thank you so much for applying, you weren't appointed, but hey, here are some boards that we'd really love for you to apply to. Something like that?
Yes, and, yes, we normally do that to all the applicants that did not get selected on the first round. Our next email tomorrow will be, you know, these boards will remain open, please go in, apply for those, because we still want you to stay engaged kind of thing. So we do that automatically to those that did not get appointed, to kind of steer them to reappoint for the ones that we are gonna extend the time for. So if there's something else that you guys want us to do, or think that we can do another step to that, we'll be happy to try it.
Can I call away on that? I think that's, I think that's the right word. Thank you, thank you, Alicia. Yeah, I guess what I'm wondering is, we, is there a way to say, you would, if you already applied, you only need to do the interview and not the application, like the long line, or vice versa, or something along those lines, since we know them. I'm just thinking, like, one step might be a lot easier for people to say yes to than the two steps. So again, not to subtravise whether we need with the substance of this, but I just wonder if we can take a step out there somewhere.
And I guess we had that question come up last year, and then I'll let Nuria speak. We had that question come up last year, because the applications are designed for each specific board. So you would have to make that decision if you want them to come in without filling out the application for that specific board to answer those specific specialty questions, that would be a decision that you would have to inform us on.
Nuria?
Well, actually, I was, I was hearing the gears in Teresa's head, wondering if you could actually waive those requirements for the application, because questions are specific for each board. So I'll let her answer that perhaps. My only thought was the enthusiasm that I heard in your voice, Ryan, like, I think that's what people need to hear, is that precise, like, this is what we love, and this is what's amazing about that board. I think if there are people that you know in community, either the applicants or others, I think that would be really great, and reaching out to them and sharing that would be amazing, as people hear about what is so great about those boards would be terrific, and spreading the word that way.
Teresa?
Um, we at very least would need to have the questions that help us know whether, forgive me, I'm struggling with a migraine, whether people qualify for the particular boards. And so that portion of the questionnaire would still need to be required. The other piece, I believe that council could waive and decide that the substance of their application would be sufficient. I wonder, though, if we would like to give people the opportunity to supplement so that they could speak specifically to the board of interest, because likely they did so, you know, in their prior application for a different board.
And I've got, Taryn and Tina have been waiting for a little while, but we should also wrap up here pretty quick, so we can get to our other items. Tara?
I kept forgetting to say one very important thing. In regards to the person who applied for the BLA, the liquor, what is the BLA? Help me.
Beverage Licensing Authority.
Thank you. I was gonna say, beverage licensing, we just want, we just had some confusion on the backend, and some of the people that applied that had their applications in, we didn't have their interviews. So I am wondering if, John, I don't know if you're still here, did you want to, in an email perhaps later, explain why there was that confusion? So then, when we bring it back again, it'll be clearer? Just, do you know what I mean? Like, we had written applications, but then we had different people for the actual interviews.
Hi, Tara, I'm not sure, I'm following you there. We did have two applicants that chose not to interview, but I'm not sure which applicants you're referring to there.
All right, why don't we dial back offline on the next steps for that one, then?
I just wanted to explain to the applicant why we are opening it back up. There was some confusion. So hang in there, applicant.
Okay, Nuria, and then I'll go to Tina.
I was just gonna suggest, Mayor, that in the interest of time, we hear the desire to perhaps streamline for any of the folks that applied for this. And if that is the desire, we can take this offline and perhaps get back to council through a hotline and provide some additional information on how to provide an easier way in which those who apply to this process can perhaps have a streamlined way in which to reapply for anything that they may be interested in, if that is of interest to council.
Okay, thanks, Tina.
Yeah, I was just gonna echo that. I think some of the positions have requirements that some of the applicants won't fulfill. So I want to be cautious with that. And also, I think this is a good forward-thinking discussion, but to change the process in such a short time period, I think that is something to be cautious with, because we have some expectations on how we treat applicants in a way that's consistent and fair. So I, I struggle with trying to change the process midstream, but do welcome a conversation as a council in the future to see if we want to do that.
Okay, I think that's well said. If streamlining would be great, but not with a fundamental process change, I might say. Okay, so I think we're, Alicia, you probably needed a certain amount of time. We said four to six weeks. Maybe we can just say five, so that we're in the middle there, and that's an amount, a certain amount of time? Does that work? Are you muted?
Yes, sir, that would be fine. And we'll go ahead and keep, and open it back up starting tomorrow for five weeks. But I wanted to confirm the boards that we are reopening, and it is both the B Jads, the BLA, and the Design Advisory Board.
That's correct.
All right. Thank you.
Okay, and with that, we'll wrap up this item. And now I'm gonna pause here. I don't know if you've been able to tell from my raspy voice and coughs and such, but I'm struggling with a cold here. So Mayor Pro Tim Spear has graciously agreed to take over the running of the meeting from this time. I am going to stay in the meeting, but I'm gonna turn my camera off, if you all don't mind, so that I can recline while I listen and participate in the rest of it. So Nicole, if you could take it away, please.
Yes, absolutely. Happy to help out tonight. First, I just want to check before we move on to the next agenda item. That was pretty intense. It was a lot of thinking, hard things. Anybody who would like just a quick stretch break? Taysha, so you got your hands up. Is that for the stretch break, or did you have something you wanted to add, Taysha?
Not only myself, but brain science is also on my side. So I would like to request that. Thank you.
Okay, let's take five minutes. I think it's, if I'm doing my time right, it's 8:04, 8:09. Be back at 8:09. Thank you, everyone. Thank you, everyone. Always such hard thinking.
I know. Well, and you've got a time difference, so.
Yeah.
Kudos to you and Aaron.
I also had sunshine today instead of clouds, so that maybe slightly in my favor there.
Hey there, before we get started, is this mic coming through?
Yes, it is.
Okay, great.
Well, before we get started, a mic coming through.
Yeah. Also, yes.
It's a miracle. I'm cured.
For now.
I was gonna say, of this.
You know how the gremlins are, they love being so busy.
I want to say, it is my official policy that I hate my computer.
This seems like a fixable problem, Mark. Can get a new computer?
No, this, this is a relatively new one.
Okay.
I just hate them all. I want to go back to the Stone Age.
Is Tina frozen?
No.
Oh, no, she's just thinking, no. She's just in deep thought, oh.
Nominate our boards with smoke, like we do at the Vatican?
I like that.
See, a couple more. Is our folks back with just video off? I just want to confirm before we head in.
Aaron here, I am back.
Trying to do my screen counting.
And Taysha, Ryan, and Tara, I don't think they're back.
Okay.
Here's Taysha.
Taysha. Ryan.
Comes Ryan.
Tara, give us a thumbs up or something if you're there and you can hear us. Well, Tara is also on, on the retreat committee, so I, I think I, oh, there you are. Yay. All right, cool.
I don't see marks when he is running our presentation.
Only one minute late.
Oh, there he is.
No, you're, you're fine, you're fine. We did, we did lots of good hard work. Okay, then I will pass it over to Nurya to introduce our next item.
Actually, I think we need to pass it to Alicia for that.
Oh, thank you. I'm sorry, I forgot it's a, forgot it's a special meeting.
That's okay.
Don't miss Alicia.
The snowstorm threw us all off. All right, next on tonight's special meeting agenda, we have item number three, which is the managers from the city manager. Three A is the 2024 Council Retreat Preparation.
Thank you, Alicia. And hello, council members. And as Mark pulls up our presentation, I'm gonna say that your city manager's team is happy to be here today and do something we don't often do, and that is to present before you. But today, we're really excited to champion and represent the body of work of the organization that is encapsulated in our newly created strategic plan. So I'm gonna ask you to turn to the next slide, Mark. And as you can see from tonight's agenda, we're gonna spend a bit of time talking about the strategic plan in our newly created work plan dashboard. We'll be highlighting some of the critical work plan items we've heard council and community, from council and community that align to our sustainability, equity, and resilience framework. And we hope to share a bit of how all this work really weaves together on this strategic journey that we've been on the past few years, and how we believe council priorities truly align with all that work. I'll say upfront, too, that one of the exciting things we've heard from this council is an emphasis on outcomes. And I'll recognize upfront that our new strategic plan lacks outcome measures in its current iteration. Year three of our budgeting for resilience and equity work will help inform those future outcome metrics. So we will continue to iterate on this strategic plan, and we will see that improve over time. But we needed to start somewhere to better align our collective work and transition from our often siloed master plans to a harmonious and synchronized citywide work plan, where the work of equity and climate and safety and healthy communities and all the other ways in which we make our community and our environment better, more resilient, more prosperous. It is all of our work, not just one department's work. And so we're starting. And you may ask what all this has to do with the preparation for your retreat. Well, we hope you've seen in the memo on the work plan dashboard that we've shared out publicly, the body of work we are currently working on and contemplating. So that as you're thinking and formulating your own council priorities, they can hopefully both help to better inform your thoughts for prioritization, as well as your considerations for what we imagine may be conversations about trade-offs at the retreat in the future. We're also hoping that some of your council priorities can help guide some of the work you're seeing in our work plan areas as they're being developed, and formed as your priorities can better sharpen and narrow our scope for the council term as well. So on to the retreat itself, and ask for the next slide. Next slide. So for the council retreat, I know that we have said that we've scheduled that, and it's coming up April third and fourth. I'll say that that comes a little bit because we have heard previous council, or the previous council, tell us that the Q1 timeframe is the right timeframe, but perhaps after election and the January retreat process, that is too early to set up what will really be your term priorities. And so we moved it back towards the end of that. It turned out that the scheduling had us come in April third and fourth. But it really allowed us to set up more robust orientation. I know that for some of you, in particular newer members, we have been giving you so much information. We've had a lot of lunch and learned, we've talked a lot about it, the work that happened in the past, the work that was coming before you. We focused a lot on some major items that are coming about, work that is ongoing, work that you've had to make a lot of decisions on. And that is what we have really done to shore up some of those. And we have talked about what will come forward in the council retreat process itself. I want to thank council member Weiner and Mayor Protam Spear, your council retreat committee members. They have been excellent as we have moved forward and tried to set up what is going to be the retreat as we move forward. On the retreat itself, we have a facilitator for that, the most excellent Heather Bergman, and I hope that you will appreciate her as much as we appreciate her facilitation. And really, the goal of that retreat is to set up what will be your list of priorities for the next two years. It helps us organize and prioritize our work. We know that if everything is a priority, nothing is a priority, so we help to lift that up as we really think about our work plan items and how we organize our work itself. And it happened to coincide with a parallel effort that the organization has been going through with our efforts to do a strategic plan, a weaving of really aligning our work efforts across the city. And if you're tired of me saying the word constrained when it comes to budget, I can guarantee you that the organization is tired of me saying alignment as we're thinking about all our work. And so you'll continue to hear that throughout this opportunity, this presentation, because that is the work that we have been doing for the past few years. And I'm gonna turn it over to Chris to talk a little bit about how this aligns. And we hope, as you're listening to this presentation, and we really want to give over some time for you all at the end to really not talk to CMO. We've got the contingent of the brain trust of the organization, your leadership team, your department heads, that you can ask clarifying questions. That as you're formulating your priorities, you have your subject matter experts here to really ask those clarifying questions of, to see as you're formulating your thoughts, to sort of peek into those. This is not the time at the retreat to sort of formulate your retreat priorities right now, but rather to get some questions and to get some clarity on some of the things that you may be thinking about. And you've got those folks here in the virtual room to ask those. But for now, I'm gonna pass it on to Chris to kick us off in that strategic plan as we think about the work to come. Chris?
Great, thanks, Nurya, and good evening, council. I'm Chris Messchuck. I serve as the deputy city manager. And I'm gonna start with just some quick background and context on the citywide strategic plan. So this diagram really shows how we get from the high-level goals of the community, which is this sustainability, equity, and resilience framework, down to the individual work that our city staff do. And what is new, as, as Nurya teed up, is this citywide strategic plan. And the idea behind it is that it really bridges from the 15-year kind of vision and policies of the Boulder Valley Comprehensive Plan to the annual and short-term kind of departmental planning and work planning. And so the strategic plan is really, how do we prioritize for the next three to five years? But as Nurya just described, the idea is, as you can see through this diagram, is it's all in alignment with, with those big picture goals. So if we go to the next slide, let's dive in a little bit more detail on how some of this all kind of fits together. And so, Mark, if you can go to the next slide for me. The work plan that I'm gonna talk about here in just a second really informs the strategic plan. And of course, not all work is highlighted in the strategic plan. It really elevates and highlights areas of focus to advance our community's goals. And you've heard us talk a lot about budgeting for resilience and equity over the last few years. And as Nurya highlighted this year, we're really starting to focus on those outcomes of our programs and the measurement of that. And actually, just today, our leadership team was talking about how those measurements can support the strategic plan and assist in budget decisions. And then we're gonna be working through this year on really an approach to develop a new process for multi-year department-level strategy planning that'll really replace that previous tool that, that we knew as master plans. And then we get to really the focus of the conversation on priorities that we're headed towards here in, in about a month, which is really that we hope that this will give council the opportunity to use the strategic plan. Hopefully, it'll be useful in your priorities for the next two years. And as you're gonna hear, it's really rooted in community feedback. And in the corresponding strategies and actions that are in the strategic plan, hopefully will help as a bit of a framework as you're headed into the retreat in April. So next, before we get into the highlights of the work plan and strategies by framework goal area, I wanted to share a little bit on this new tool for the council and the community to really see all of the planned projects that we have this year. And it really builds upon the top 10 council priorities dashboard that we started last term. So as you can see here, it includes the total projects, and how many are gonna go to a council meeting or a board meeting, active projects by status, and categorization by CERA framework goal area. And then we get to kind of top projects by department. So you can kind of scroll through this list, either with your mouse, or there's a little tab here on the side that you can use to, to see those top projects. And then if we move the dashboard down just a little bit, you'll see a placeholder space for the council priorities. So once you land on those, we'll highlight those there to track their progress. And then we get to the citywide projects. And so this list here, if we actually, let's look up at the top, you'll see the, the project name and the lead department and a description, some stats on timing and categorization, other departments that are gonna support each of these projects. And as you go to scroll through this list, you'll see it's, it's very long. There's lots of stuff in here. It's organized by department, so there's lots to look at. But the idea is, hopefully, you can look through that and start to see if there's things that you're looking for in there. So with that, I am going to go ahead and tee it up on the next slide here to have us dive into the strategic plan itself and an overview of each of the work plan items. And I think Pam is gonna be the one to tee us up here, so Pam, go ahead and take it away.
Yes, thank you, Chris. For this next, sorry, good evening, city council. I'm Pam Davis. My pronouns are she/her, and I'm one of your assistant city managers. For this next section, Mark, Chris, and I are going to share several of the priority actions under each goal area in our strategic plan. So I'm going to start us off with the goal area of safe. The safe goal area, along with the strategies reflected in the strategic plan, calls for a holistic approach to a broad definition of safety that includes not only police and fire operations, but also transportation, emergency preparedness, building safety, cybersecurity, employee safety, reliability of utilities, and many other facets. Additional components of safety will overlap with nearly all other of our goal areas. The planned work we have regarding safety reflects recent community input in areas relating to policing, safe public spaces, mobility, disaster preparedness, and more. A few key examples of community engagement and feedback that have informed our work plan include overwhelming support of the climate tax renewal in November of 2022, which specifically supports community wildfire and resilience efforts, the recent unanimous acceptance of the reimagined policing plan in late 2023 that seeks to prioritize problem-solving public safety efforts. This plan was developed from community input and validated through follow-up engagement. Several relevant themes included focus on community partnership and policing, prevention of harm rather than reactively responding to harm, and leading in equity accountability and transparency. The city also conducted polling in June of 2023 in advance of a possible renewal of an expiring 0.15% general fund sales and use tax. The polling touched on a number of topics, including sentiment related to community safety. From that polling, we learned that public safety was the third most common response in open-ended comments asking about the most important issue facing Boulder today. It was also one of the top four responses for when likely voters would allocate additional funding toward public safety, including crime prevention. And finally, the 2023 Community Survey provided statistically validated gauging public sentiment on a range of topics. One concerning result from that survey was a 15% decline in the community feeling very or somewhat safe in the downtown area compared to 2018, and lower than similar national benchmarks and community feeling safe from property crime and from fire, flood, or other natural disasters. Understanding important trends like these is informing our future priorities. Next slide, please. Next slide, please. So as we look ahead to the next couple of years and specific work plan items to advance the safe goal. A couple items include the Community Wildfire Protection Plan update and implementation of strategies to manage the wildland urban interface. Increasing proactive policing and community partnerships and building on best practices of policing with proactive work like the homeless outreach team and other new strategies. We also will be focusing on implementation of the U.S. Department of Transportation Safe Streets for All Grants, including completing and moving forward with build out of the core arterial network. These are just a few of many that you can peruse in that council dashboard that Chris demonstrated. But for now, I think we will move to the next goal area.
All right, thanks, Pam. I've got the next area for you this evening. I'm Mark Wolf, Assistant City Manager. I'm happy to talk about the SARA goal area of healthy and socially thriving, which imagines this community as a place where all residents can meet their basic needs while enjoying high levels of social, physical and mental well being. This has long been a vision and priority for community and certain aspects have been emphasized in recent years. The pandemic has exacerbated wage disparity, mental health needs and other social issues that have required local interventions. Our Housing and Human Services Department in particular has reported an increased demand for basic need support, including housing, food and childcare, both through the direct services that we provide and through our partners such as the Emergency Family Assistance Association or EFA. In recent engagement and data, the community has reinforced this information. Our community connectors identified equitable access to financial security and economic opportunity as two out of the top three priorities during our 2024 budget engagement. Recent polling indicated broad community support for increasing funding for human services, including behavioral health and accessibility in indoor and outdoor recreation. Also informing this goal is data that shows Boulder as a rapidly aging community. The total county population of older adults will double by 2040. And critically important to all of this work is our ability to center on equity. This is reflected reflected in our racial equity plan, recent commitments with our tribal leadership partners and the application of the racial equity instrument throughout our work plan. This background information and data informs the strategy number four in the citywide strategic plan and some of the specific critical work plan items. You'll see our priority actions that you can access within the strategic plan document. Some of the specific items that we'll point out in Healthy and Socially Thriving this evening for the year ahead. It includes coordination with Boulder County to review and determine the city's role in providing mental and behavioral health services, focusing in on finishing our commitments with ARPA dollars and planning for the future, implementing key improvements in Violet Park and Civic Area Phase Two, looking at our needs across our recreation system as we make capital investment and implementation of our city tribal nation MOU. Moving right along to the SARA goal area of livable, which speaks to the vision to have a sustainable, equitable and resilient built environment that can be accessed by all. Much of this vision is outlined in the Boulder Valley Comprehensive Plan, which guides policy and everything from land use to public infrastructure. Affordability continues to be a top issue across community. One of the lowest levels of satisfaction within the recent community survey is in the overall cost of living in Boulder. The poll associated with the renewal of the 0.15 that Pam mentioned indicated the top issues identified by community were housing affordability and homelessness. Housing first strategies and regional affordable housing efforts have guided the establishment of over 1,500 permanently affordable housing units since inclusionary housing was established in 2013. And despite that major progress, the development and funding of affordable housing will continue to present challenges. National and local increases in homelessness also challenge our regional support systems. And lastly, in addition to community feedback related to safety in public spaces, through recent engagements as a part of Boulder Social Streets, there is community desire to reimagine the use of public right of ways. You'll see these reflected in our strategies number five and six. And again, priority actions are found in the strategic plan. Some of the specific work ahead includes the identification of regional and local funding strategies to continue to increase support for affordable housing development, completion of a strategy assessment through our homeless solutions for Boulder County or HSBC, and review of of policy options with city council. Our BVCP update scheduled to begin this year, Boulder Junction Phase Two and East Boulder Land Use zoning and operations implementation, the completion of our modular factory and the day services center.
Thank you, Mark. I will be picking us back up on the accessible and connected goal area. This goal area envisions an accessible and connected community in two key ways. Both the city's responsibility to provide the physical infrastructure and policies to support a sustainable multimodal transportation system, as well as providing equitable access to information, programs and services for all. Our extensive work toward this goal is informed by many inputs, including the 2019 Transportation Master Plan that was based in considerable community engagement, offered a vision of multimodal transportation that is safe, equitable, reliable, supports climate commitments and provides choices. Another recent Boulder Valley Employee Survey demonstrates that post pandemic challenges to our system, including lingering transit service cuts and declining employer participation in the RTD Eco Pass program. In addition, more jobs in Boulder are held by non residents and these employees primarily use single occupancy vehicles to get to their jobs in Boulder. The average commute distance is increasing for non resident employees as well. Currently commuting over 18 miles on average. Likely compounded by the impact of remote and hybrid working, the impact of single occupancy vehicle travel risks compromising not only local and regional transit, but also climate action and emissions targets. We also have information from the community survey in which respondents reported the ease of travel by car has increased since 2018 and the ease of travel by public transportation and bicycle is higher than the national benchmark. On the other key focus of community access to the city government, partnership with historically underserved communities through our Community Connectors and Residents Program has improved engagement in several ways, from individual program design to city budget development. Connectors share that the program has been well received within their respected communities. And while the city celebrates those improvements, our recent community survey also indicates the disparity remains. According to the survey, there is a 12% difference between white and other races that report feeling very welcome or somewhat welcome at city sponsored community engagement events. This mirrors some recent Community Connectors and Residents feedback in feeling less welcome in certain parts of the community, such as the downtown area. We must continue to work to reduce these disparities. Changes to how information is accessed by community can help address some of these gaps. The city has taken action in language access over the past several years to make city information more accessible. And ongoing work to meet state law requirements will increase digital accessibility across all sources of public information. All of these sources have helped shaped the upcoming key work plan items. Next slide, please. Several work plan items envisioned for the accessible and connected goal include implementing strategies related to improving council specific community engagement, implementation of boards and commissions process improvements as discussed earlier tonight, continued implementation of the core arterial network, implementation of a commercial area connection strategy, continued development of regional trail connections with partners and continued regional transit funding planning. Next goal, please. This goal is environmentally sustainable. The environmentally sustainable goal area envisions Boulder as benefiting from and supporting clean energy, preserving and responsibly using the earth's resources and caring for ecosystems. While significant leadership to advance this goal rests with our Climate Initiatives Department, every facet of the city organization plays a role in ensuring an environmentally sustainable future. Climate change significantly impacts Boulder. All 10 of the hottest years on record have occurred since 2005 and the impacts play out in Boulder in real time, from the 2013 floods to the 2020 Cowood Fire. Recognizing the urgency of the threats, the city council unanimously declared a climate emergency in July of 2019. Since then, city departments have worked diligently to prioritize climate solutions across the breadth of our work. A few recent examples of community input supporting this work includes the Open Space and Mountain Parks Master Plan adopted in September 2019 prioritizes ecosystem health and resilience as its first focus area due to significant support throughout the planning engagement. The process to develop this plan included community events, a statistically valid community survey and online public engagement. It also included targeted outreach and engagement with over 1,400 people whose voices have been historically excluded, including members of the Latinx community, youth and persons experiencing disabilities. Then in November of 2020, just over 53% of Boulder voters approved a new franchise agreement with Excel Energy. By passing the franchise agreement, voters also approved a partnership between the city and Excel to make our grid cleaner and more resilient, make buildings more efficient and less reliant on natural gas and support community wide adoption of electric vehicles. The facilities master plan was then adopted in 2021 and features resilient and sustainable as its top two guiding principles. Based on community and city department engagement, this plan features a focus area on reducing building carbon emissions. The city continues to work to meet the goal of an 80% reduction by 2030. In addition, this plan calls for cities, the city, to reduce facilities flood and wildfire vulnerability and increase disaster readiness. And finally, as mentioned in other parts of this presentation, Boulder residents passed the climate tax with just over 70% support in 2022. Climate tax dollars will support the city's ongoing climate and resilient efforts with 1.5 million of the connected revenues used each year to accelerate wildfire resilience measures. These sources of feedback and recent planning has supported the upcoming key work plan items. Next slide, thank you. This critical work will include the developing and implementation of the Community Wildfire Protection Plan, planning and implementing strategies that mitigate greenhouse gas impacts of materials used in building construction, designing and conducting ongoing city engagement with businesses regarding circular economy initiatives and assistance, and adopting the 2024 Energy Code and beginning community engagement on the next generation of voluntary and regulatory strategies. Next goal.
All right, two to go here under the responsibly governed goal area. This is all about city operations, so excellent customer experience, responsibly managing the really billions of dollars of assets that the city has and ensuring that we offer programs and services that are inclusive. And this goal area also includes our people, the staff of the city and our desire to be an employer of choice. And that also includes to make sure we have policies and programs to support our employees, their inclusion and well being as well. So there's a lot that's happening in the the community to inform our work here. As you've already heard Mark and Pam describe, a lot of the recent community engagement efforts and surveys have given us areas of focus to work on over the next few years. You'll see that reflected in these two strategic plan strategies that are here on the screen. We're going to break ground on the Alpine Balsam site, which also includes a new consolidated one stop location for customer service with the community as well as city offices. And this is a vision that started back in 2015 and really achieves a big part of the the citywide facilities plan as well. We talked earlier about budgeting for resilience and equity and and Nuriya referenced the continued work that we need to do around data driven program outcomes for all we do in the city. And that work has really highlighted the need for a larger financial strategy as well. And we began working last year on a project that we refer to as our internal services project, which is those departments that their work really supports the city organization itself and examining how we can most effectively and efficiently deliver those services within the city organization. And what we've seen through a lot of that work is a highlighted need for more detailed and consistent inventory and analysis of the city's assets to inform our budgeting as well. The way we manage and deliver many of our projects. And really, this is all in a in a supportive, really our culture of continuous improvement and operational excellence. And these really lead into the actions that that are in the strategic plan that you can see. So let's go to the next slide. And some of the specific work that you'll see in this area includes the development of that long term financial strategy, which is underway. We've already referenced our ARPA funded programs, some code changes for process improvements that that were even referenced tonight. That includes Title IX land use as well as Title III taxation. A lot of the work that's in this goal area also includes things that don't typically end up on a council agenda. So we're doing a bunch of work right now to make sure that we're ready to implement the state's new digital accessibility laws that go into effect on July 1st. We're doing a lot of work around an enhanced employee safety program. And it's focused really on not on more than just the traditional occupational safety, but really on broader culture and perceptions, even down to individual safety for our employees. And then continued implementation of the racial equity plan. And this year, it's about department Jedi teams, departmental assessments and action plans. So with that, I'll hand it back to Mark to round us out with our final goal.
Thanks, Chris. Take us home. The SARA goal area of economically vital envisions a healthy, equitable and resilient local economy that is based on diversity, economic opportunity and innovation. The Boulder economy's assets include a world class university, a bustling tourism industry, high tech and innovation, small business entrepreneurship and a high overall quality of life. Contrasting our strong economic assets are vulnerabilities in terms of the cost of living, business process complexity and income inequality. The pandemic has exacerbated certain inequities, especially as it relates to wage growth and income disparity. The infusion of federal resources here locally primarily through ARPA allowed for investments in basic needs and small businesses. As these federal supports have expired or are going to expire, and as we've previously covered, the importance of minimum basic income on overall wellness has come into sharp focus. The pandemic also heightened community awareness of the importance of a strong business community, both to support the vibrancy of local sales tax, which provides for our city services, but the overall vibrancy in community. Efforts relating to continued work and streamlining certain development related processes and revisiting our economic sustainability strategy are contemplated under this goal area and are reflected in strategies 14 and 15. In addition to some of our key priority actions, our items on the work plan in economically vital, including assessing the impact of Elevate Boulder or our Guaranteed Income Pilot Program funded through ARPA and determining a future of that investment, researching tools to deepen the city's role in supporting economic vitality, including looking at the role of an urban renewal authority in investing in housing and transportation and other tools such as broadening the use of general improvement districts, other incentives to to help look at things like reimagining vacant commercial spaces. And last but not least is making continued progress in our in our code process improvements and simplifications to encourage investments in critical areas. Back to Nuriya.
Thanks, Mark. So council members, we got, we're going to go back to the mechanics of the retreat and I'll just say that we've got a lot of information at you, right? And as I mentioned, we got a wealth of subject matter experts here at the ready to answer any of your questions and whether that's now or at a later time. But our hope really is that this helps you in preparing your own priorities. And we hope frankly, that your priorities help inform us and and let us know what you'd like us to lift in our work as we jointly and collectively work in service to the community that we both serve. And so that is why we've Work in service to the community that we both serve. And so that is why we've chosen to highlight. The wealth of work that we're working on and why we've chosen to work to share out a work plan dashboard that. We have never sort of let you and community really see the breadth. And the scope of work that we are doing as an organization. So we hope that is helpful. And then we hope you see how that can tie into your thoughts and your planning for your council priorities. But I will switch back to the next steps as we're thinking about the retreat. We are asking council members to do a few homework assignments to help us utilize that retreat time most effectively. As you know, we've reached out to boards and commissions and the police oversight panel and the community connectors and residents. To give them an optional opportunity to submit letters describing their own priorities and work plans. We've got some that have already given some of those and. You've been offered an opportunity to start seeing some of their work plans and their thoughts as they have moved forward. They have until March 22nd to do that. And so those are available and I know our wonderful assistant to city council has been emailing those as those have come in. Additionally, our retreat facilitator, I mentioned Heather Bergman from Peak Facilitation at the beginning of this presentation. She has offered to meet with council members one on one. I have heard she has been doing that. And if you haven't yet had the time. I really encourage you to do that. I I think she's not just a great facilitator, but it will help her engage and plan for her facilitation. As we move that forward. So if you haven't had a time or you need some help, please reach out to Megs. As she can probably assist in that process as well. Tomorrow, we're going to be sending out a form stack to each one of you to begin collecting council priorities areas. Ideas, sorry. That doesn't mean you have to send them in tomorrow because I know that you want to be informed by the letters that you were getting. By the boards and commissions and by community connectors and residents, but we want to make sure you have those form stacks at the ready. We have heard from the retreat committee members and others on council that all of that insight and input is useful to you. So that form stack will be open until March 27th. To allow you to have the opportunity to review those letters and think about how those will inform your own priority areas. We will be asking you to submit those to us by March 27th. To allow us until March 29th to collect those, package those and send those out to you. I know that we you have asked us to be able to see those so that you can be aware of what you were all thinking about. So we are giving ourselves a short and mere two days to hear back from you and package those and send those out. I promise you that we will be sending you all of this by email. So no need to jot it all down in writing. We will follow up with an email, sending you all of these timelines and deadlines. And finally, in preparation for the first day's opening exercise, we're asking each council member to prepare remarks about their vision for Boulder over the next two years. In no more than a few minutes, council members will be asked to describe their ideal vision for the city and community over the next two years. And then on the second day, our second day opening exercise will ask each of you to briefly share how you prefer to be communicated with. And how you your modes of communication. So feel free to start brainstorming your short, how to best communicate with me pitch. So we're excited to hear that. And frankly, we will learn as well from that entree. Next slide. And so we see here a little bit of a brief agenda. We have been working with our facilitator and she has been trying to package this on day one as we look to the day. For our 11, our day one, April 3rd, 11 to three. You can see a little bit of what the day will look like. We are really thinking about process improvements as we look for that day. We're working on bucketing all your process improvement items. So that we can think about those low hanging fruit items, if you will, those that can be perhaps a yes, no, quick. Let's move forward as we think about that. There are others frankly, that may need some decision points on whether you'd like us to prioritize or not. For additional research, discussion or prioritization. There are others too, as we're looking at it that are more operational in nature, some that I think we can address fairly quickly, some that perhaps are already in the works. And we want to make sure that we can get those out of the way. I will say that we're still doing some research on some internally and I know that some folks are going to be meeting with the city attorney's office early next week. To better determine some of those timeframes. So we will let you know soon and we will be sending those out for you. So you can see how we're bucketing those in advance of the retreat. So please know that we will. Make sure that you get to see all those process items ahead of time. Day two will be, excuse me, as I'm losing my voice. Day two will really be. Focused solely on priority items and really making sure that we have the time to discuss all of your priorities, ranking them. And having our usual discussion of clarity and hearing from staff, getting some scoping and. Hopefully being able to rank and land on your 10 priority items as we move forward. So. That is what we're looking for in our the April 3rd and 4th day together. So. With that, Mayor Protem, I perhaps will pass to you.
Wonderful. Thank you so much. And just want to lift up that thanks to everybody involved. I think it's wonderful that you're helping us to. Make the the work that you all do as staff more transparent as we're heading into the work plan process this year. So thank you so much for all of that. And just a. Shout out to Megs for organizing all the letters as they're coming in. That's that's a huge help. And of course to Heather, I just want to lift up that if you haven't met with Heather yet, please do. It is helpful just. To kind of share out with her. And so especially for newer folks, if you haven't met with her, just so that she can. You can get to know her a little bit and she can get to know you before we head into two days of retreat. So I just, as we head into just get questions, I just want to make sure. That, you know, understanding and focusing this correctly. Nuria, really the the presentation that you and staff gave on the internal strategic plan. Thank you, staff, for that wonderful and detailed presentation. It's really sort of an informed level of engagement for us because this is an internal document. That you and your staff are using to organize your work that exists separate from the the priorities that we'll be doing. So I just want to clarify that. Make sure that as we head into questions, we're really looking for those questions that are going to. Clarify issues for us or help us think about how we might incorporate it into council work plan priorities. That was the most long winded question ever.
It is in this presentation. I mean, it was originally a study session, right? It is intended to be informational. I hope that it shares some of the work that we're doing. But we also really hope that it would inform. Your thinking as you're thinking about your priorities. We get a lot of your questions when you're thinking about. Council priorities. We recall that from previous council terms. And we wanted to get ahead of that this time so that we can share a little bit about what you're doing. But as you can see, some of our work plan priorities are big. And what we often hear from you and the council priorities is a very specific, very, this is what I want to get done in my term. And that's what's really helpful for us as we move forward. It happened that in this year three of our work in our journey, our organizational journey. We finally landed on a strategic plan and we certainly wanted to share that with you. It will evolve, it will iterate. We hope you're excited about it as we are excited about it. We hope you like it. We hope you embrace it as we have. But mostly we hope that it informs your thinking and your considerations and. Your inquiries as you're thinking about your own priorities. And so. Open to your thoughts and and any curiosities you may have about whatever it is that you're considering as you move forward.
Great, thank you. And I know that you posed a couple of questions for us. So I'm wondering if someone could put those. Questions in the chat and perhaps we can start with the the first one. I'll just read it out loud. Do we have any questions about the strategic plan and the featured work plan content? So let's just start with any questions along those lines.
And if the team can put those memo questions in the chat, that would be great because we did not have them on the slide.
It will be there shortly.
All right, ahead.
Man, was was hoping others would would take the bite. All right, well, I'll go first. Couple of questions. First is kind of. An overarching one, which is I'm still trying to understand the intersection of how the strategic plan intersects. With our council priorities in terms of how will these priorities become actionable items from which council can weigh in on. And and so I'll use an example, which is kind of in the bucket of wildfire mitigation. And I love that it is, you know, strategy one. It's D, you know, just lays it out right there. But. Then when I look in the document that looks at the detailed citywide projects, I mean, I see. Training that's Boulder fire rescue. I see fuel reductions, which is O S M P in the wooey, resources and data outreach and education. The community wildfire protection program, not sure what that is. And then I see curbside assessment. And so. I'm wondering like, one of my priorities is going to be wildfire mitigation. And and I I just want to, I want to know. Is that is that work that that staff is doing checking all the boxes that I'm hoping to achieve? And how do we? How do we integrate that? Because I don't want to wave my hand to say I want a council priority that then is just redundant with council with with staff work. So. The example of my uncertainty going into the retreat is where does like code enhancements and code modifications fit in? Regarding like juniper bushes, vegetation clearance, flammable's within proximity to housing because that's. So interconnected to the curbside assessment. So that that's that's the part that helps inform me what I need to either. Lean back on and say staff's got it or say, oh, there's more to do. Let's add some, let's have council add some trade wins to the sales. And enhance what staff is already doing. So none of that, that's kind of my long about question. I just want to know that intersectionality a little better.
I'll take a stab at it. And frankly, I'll invite anyone, not just from CMO, but certainly invite the whole team to. To weigh in, but it's that second one, I think I would. I would think of that second one. As I mentioned before, like this, A, this started as an internal document to just align all of our work because we had disparate work everywhere, right? This is that interweaving of what we really wanted to prioritize as a team. And as we're thinking about, and as you look at the work plan too, it's broad, right? Like there's a whole bunch of things that we want to do. And what we love to hear from council is. What is it the thing that you think will move the needle the most? And if that is from council. Hardening, looking at juniper bushes, a looking at what are the things that really will you think should be the priority for staff? Because we may think it's one thing and you think it is this, this is the thing, single most thing that you think we should prioritize. That to us is important because we may, we may take it in a different direction. We may think it is. A variety of. Actions that are on balance, we can do one thing first, or we can do, we can start from A to Z, or we can start from Z to A. And your priority areas to start from A to Z. That's for us is the intersectionality or or a phasing of it. This is the thing to do first. So I I think we need to hear that from council. Because there's a lot of things that we could be doing that I think are aligned. And that's where I think that we are. Off because we're hearing and our work plan is informed by both community voice and by council voice. I don't think we are ever too far apart. I think our our interest in our work plan is very much informed by council. And what is important for us when we hear from council, how how we hear your council priorities is that is for us, the prioritization. Of what we move forward. So I I don't know if that. Answers your question exactly because I do think they're always intersected.
You know, I appreciate that. I think that certainly goes a long way. I think I think where I'm struggling is I I want to view. At least the way I want to present council work plan items is is on a much higher level. And not get so prescriptive. But when I see staff work plan items that are kind of missing a prescriptive piece. How can we, how can we insert that without it being like a council work plan? You know, big strategic item because like I said, that little piece on welfare is not really a big strategic business. It's just a missing piece. In the grander work that staff's already doing. And so that's how I want to try to figure out like the scale, like this is just a little piece. But do I want to spend time on a work plan, I council strategy work plan item on what is just a missing piece? So I'm just trying to figure out the scale of what we should be focusing on.
I think that might be a clarification question though, though. Because instead of a missing piece, I think that may be, hey, I see this on the work plan. That's a detail. I bet you you're working on Junipers, right? I mean, I think it's both. I I think that may be a in the weeds kind of like it can be both. I think that's an invitation to, hey, Wildland team. Can you tell me if this is something you're working on, right? Because the details of the work plan in those work plan, and when you look at the dashboard. There are sub projects deep into that and those are very operational. So I don't know if it's a missing piece or if it's a. To say it's a gap or I just want to know that it's included or not. And that's a conversation.
Okay. And if it's not like there's a side conversation or do we use the retreat to kind of add that? So that's. That's the scalability. And similarly with like economic development, like I know staff's already toying with this, but like. Boy, I'd love to see if council wants to really shove this thing forward and add some weight behind it. And 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 those are sort of pieces. Anyway, I'm just trying to figure out where to keep my scale and not dive down. Especially because we didn't have a strategic plan like this when we started on council. So this is like new new frontier. And it gets us closer, right? There was an air sandwich for a while where it was council and staff and there was a whole lot of. Space in the middle. And I think we're narrowing that, which is great. And I love to see that that front end work from staff, but it still then changes some of our expectations on the front end as well.
Yeah, I I would hope that council priorities are really up here in the vision area. And if you have questions about like, does this include this? That's a conversation between us, right?
Can I call a quick Matt and Daria? Do you mind, council friends? Okay, so in that vein, so let's say, remember two years ago when I said, gosh, I really want to see lighting in the tunnels. So that didn't make it to the priorities because it's not really, it's this, it's a weed. It's in the weeds. It's not really a big picture. But we got it done anyway, but a lot of my thoughts are in are in the weed. So let's say somebody sent us a letter. That the hill, the lighting on the hill is not safe, it doesn't feel safe for women, especially on some of those side streets. Does that mean I have a lighting priority? Does that mean it's a part of a safety priority? Do I just tell it to you and council during? So that's I I'm kind of in the same where I don't really know where a lot of my priorities fit. Should I fit them with other council people in a broad spectrum of safety? So and then who will tell us? So if I bring my list. Is like, or let's say Matt brings his list is is Mike then going to say, no, that Juniper is already on our list. You can take it off. So I have similar questions as Matt does.
Thanks, Tara. Teresa, I just saw your hand go up. Just wondering if you have something to share with us.
I do. I think as you all are thinking about council priorities, it's important to remember roles. And remember, this is a council. City manager form of government where council sets policy and priorities. And and then the city manager and the city manager staff. Figures out the operational piece of those. And so if you want to do the operational piece, please apply to work with us. That would be great. But currently you're in a policymaking role. And so I just wanted to remind you of that.
I I appreciate that, but if I want to create an ordinance to do something. That, I mean, that's that's still in the weeds. That's not a high level strategy. That's like, I want to create a specific ordinance, right? So that's, that's the balance piece. That I'm trying to suss out in terms of how much do I really go down those holes versus not so that that I so I appreciate that. I just don't know where that dividing line is.
I think that's right. I mean, and it's perfectly appropriate, for example, to say, I want to see an ordinance around wildlife mitigation and I would expect to see these kinds of things in it. Yeah, right. And then staff helps figure out what else needs to be in it. How do we fit those kinds of things in it? How do we, how do we effectuate your vision?
Thank you for that clarity.
Yeah, thank you so much, Matt and Tara for bringing raising that up. I think this is as it's new, it's something we were, many of us were wondering about. Taysha, I see your hand next.
Oh, you're muted, Taysha.
Sorry about that. I very.
Sorry about that. I very much appreciated the conversation that Matt and Tara brought up regarding the grain size and looked to maybe some further clarification as we're moving into that session. And again, just really excited to see the braiding of the different work and the the kind of cross cutting themes. I think one thing that I'm, I'm hopeful of seeing more of as this, as this initiative continues to move forward is the golden thread of research and evaluation. And unfortunately, many of you referenced the community survey again. And leaned very heavily on it several times. And Mark, I did want to acknowledge that you did mention the community connector feedback in, in your section. And thank you for that one time. But it does raise other concerns that I've raised previously about research and evaluation. As some of you know, I had the opportunity, the privilege of going to the National League of Cities Conference and had the opportunity to actually meet with some of the staff members on their research and evaluation team to raise some of the questions and issues that I had with the methodology, data analysis, and the essentially the findings, which then compromises the findings. And I was actually happy to know that these issues are on their radar screen, that they also do not think that white, not white, Hispanic, not Hispanic is not best practice. And they are actually reevaluating all of their partners to ensure that they are aligned with more equitable research practices. And so as you continue to move on with this work, I, I'm hopeful to see more information about how what, what the research ethic or philosophy or approach will be to ensure that we can have valid and reliable data on which, upon which to make these critical decisions that impact our community. Thank you so much.
Thank you. And I just want to flag, oh, wonderful, Mark, you're back. Great. Okay, Lauren.
Thanks. Um, I, I heard so what Taisha just brought up was something that sort of I had heard and also sort of struck a chord with me during the presentation. So I look forward to hearing some more information about that. I like this new dashboard that has been presented, and I was just wondering if that dashboard is gonna be, like, what is our update strategy? Because I think in previously with our work plan items, sometimes I've gone back to refer to the dashboard and found it a little bit out of date. And that's totally understandable, but I think we should maybe set some expectations around how often that is. So people kind of
To do that on a quarterly basis, or, uh, as we're moving forward, but we, we plan to, not only do we plan to update it, but we will actually iterate on that dashboard, right? There are things that we have missing. Um, I have asked Amy to take a look. We plan to think about what are those areas in those projects that we'll plan to use the racial equity instrument? Not everything in those projects needs that. But some do, and we want to make sure that we're actually pointing to those. And so we're actually going to be including that as we move forward. We want to continue to show progress as that moves. So that dashboard is actually going to iterate and evolve over time. So Chris, can you remind me of the timeline that we were thinking about?
Yeah, you got it right. It was, we were thinking kind of quarterly would be the, the overall kind of refresh on that. But to Nuriya's point, I think we're also going to iterate as we find what is useful, what we hear from you is, is useful. The council priorities dashboard that we started last term, we were updating those projects monthly at the end of each month with the idea that those projects are a little bit more granular in the tracking. So I think as we go to any feedback that you have to all of us, we'll welcomely, welcomely take it.
And what I say too is, is, uh, I would ask, afford us a little grace, right? This is the first time we're doing it. There are over 500 projects there, right? Like, and that is not all the projects we are doing. Because there's a lot of core services that aren't even included in that. So I'm excited to share that with you, but, and, and want constructive feedback as we're moving it. But it's extraordinary and so proud to lift up the work that this organization is doing, right?
Yeah, no, I'm really excited about it. Again, and and it's more because I see keeping it constantly updated as being a challenging thing. And so maybe it's communicating what the last time it was updated and when the next time is, is expected to be updated is like a little footnote or something. Just because we all know these things shift around a fair amount. I had a couple of other questions kind of about work plan items since people were asking those, I'm going to slide that in here. If we're aligning some, a lot of our work plan items with things that staff is already doing, do we get more than 10 work plan items?
No. There's so much work going on. Don't try to be sneaky.
Not sneaky, just hopeful. That wasn't sneaky. Okay.
Now, we'll see. I mean, it depends, right? It depends on what you, what you bring. It depends on the lift. It depends on capacity. Although I will say that, right, when you all started last term, we were down 177 people, if you recall, right? How frustrating was that for when you started your term?
And we still got through our work plan items and we even, you know,
Listen.
Underpass lighting.
HHS and P and D S barely survived.
Okay, so and then I just had a quick concern I wanted to bring up, which was kind of around the timing that I saw for our work plan items discussion. It seemed to me that in previous rich, like first year retreats or these work plan setting retreats, that there's often been more than one day set aside for work plan discussion. I mean, at least our first year, I think we sort of introduced topics one day and then went through like evaluating them the second day. It wasn't all of two days, but it was a day and a half.
Lauren, could I, could I ask just to pause that question until we get through the questions around the strategic plan? I just want to
Okay.
Push up this one if that's all right with you.
Yeah.
Think it'll fit well there. Thank you. Did you have other questions, Lauren?
No, that's it.
Tina, before I call on you, I just wanted to check in, Taisha, I wasn't sure with, with your comments. I took that as you were, you were wanting that for awareness. But I was wondering if there was a response, if there was action, if there was a question that you had that, that you wanted answered with your questions around the survey and how that, that was used. So I just, just wanted to check in on that before we move forward.
I appreciate that. I think it was more of a request and a mindfulness that that is a huge gap that needs to be addressed. And just in general, the need for more of a comprehensive kind of approach around the work that we're doing. Um, and really being informed by somebody who has the chops of working across a variety of different top, uh, different departments, different contact, content areas. Again, I think back to, um, my work with public education and state education agencies, right? I mean, you're dealing with a variety of different grain sizes of information between construction of schools to staffing, to students, to faculty. Um, and yet they have accountability systems. And so um, I'm hopeful that that's something that we can continue to go back to. Thank you. Um, and, um, and just point of clarification, there will be time to talk about the actual agenda for the meeting, correct?
Yes, yep, yeah, correct. Yeah. After we do the questions, just questions here.
No, and I absolutely love the dashboard. Um, it's just absolutely phenomenal. And I think that there will be just really great opportunities to extend that even internally to when council members are making some decisions around things. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Uh, Tina, thank you.
Yeah, um, I just, just first want to start off saying that this is just the, my favorite moment on city council since we started is seeing this plan and seeing all these activities in one place with an outcome based strategy. For me, it's just incredibly important that we have an outcome based focus. Um, and I think that I'll be thinking about outcomes a lot when I think about my priorities, and I'll start with that most likely. And uh, knowing me, I won't fill in many details. I'll be looking to staff to do that work. And I also just following up on the, um, the frequency of updates, I'm really flexible as long as it just says when it was updated last. And also that it's consistent if, um, departments maintain separate websites that have metrics on it. I would love to make sure that, um, either they don't do that, or, or that we know where they are, but that they're all the same. Uh, so that when we're out in the community, we can have a clear message of what the numbers are and what the changes uh, might look like. And then the other part is just, um, understanding better projects or activities or outcomes that are in jeopardy because of budgeting reasons. If there's an easy way for a council person to know that, hey, this is going to need more political will, uh, either from a community engagement perspective or from a budget perspective, if there's, if there's a way to highlight that, that feels comfortable. Um, and maybe that's just a place for discussion.
Thanks so much.
All right. Um, thanks, everyone. Uh, we got, oh, yes, Taisha.
Sorry, friend. Um, Tina brought up something that I think, um, I wanted to, um, echo and then also expand on that maybe having some fiscal data. Again, I know that's something that I'm interested in just from a council perspective when we need to make decisions. But um, again, there tends to be a silo between the project work and the fiscal effort that is needed for that work. And so any ways that we can also include some of the financial data that is available and easier at that level of grade size would be helpful. Thank you.
Thank you. And thank you, Tina and Taisha for doing the perfect segue into question two, which is, do you need any additional information to support your retreat preparation? Um, so since I sort of sneakily took us into that, that question, um, Tina and Taisha, since you just spoke, I wanted to offer you a chance. Is there anything else you would like to add? Um, in terms of thinking about your retreat preparation?
Thank you. Um, so I am very grateful. I think one of the challenges or opportunities rather will be just, I'll need more time to play in the dashboard to see, um, what we can get from there. And I think I've already asked for the financial information by project, by department. I think that just having financial reports that's similar to this type of work that would align to these areas or however you want to organize it. I'm neither here nor there, but um, I think we, we all talked very, at, we talked at length, um, at the homeless solutions about the ways that we would like to see some of that financial data by project and by at least three years of data, um, so that we can see change over time would be incredibly helpful and being able to couple that with outcomes and, and output information would be very helpful. So again, I know that that's a heavy lift for, um, two weeks, but especially in some of the higher priority areas like housing, homelessness and, um, the unhoused. And, um, yeah, I just think that it would be helpful to have more financial information in a grain size that's going to be useful. Although the dash, the, the financial dashboard is very helpful. It's hard to look across programs. Um, and so that's where I'm having some challenges there. So I would love that. And then I do have some concerns around, um, just not, 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 not having enough timing for the work plan agenda items. Although at the same time, I would like to see more teamwork, team building information, and maybe we can expand the that communications to question with just how you, what's the best way to work with me and get the work going? Because communication is one aspect of, of collaboration and cooperation. So would love to see that question expanded. Thank you so much, Tina.
Awesome. Cool. Um, I think one of the, I don't know if I really need it for my preparation, but I'll maybe figure out how to ask this, but it might be that my priority is really to accelerate an existing priority. Um, and just understanding how we could do that from a budget perspective. So, you know, kind of under, you know, do I need an extra mill to get climate 5% faster? What, you know, something like that. Um, so that's what I'm trying to, to just get my arms around.
Matt?
I, I'm so glad Tina brought that up because that, that was a big point for me was like, you know, sometimes a process is, is like a year, 18 months. And how can council come in and be like, we want to own this and we want to shave six to nine months off that because we just want to get it, we, it needs to get done now. So that, that's, that, that, I think what Tina hit on was spot on. That would be a lot of interest for me and just to know what the trade offs are for doing that. I see Nuriya smiling, so she knows where I'm at.
Thanks, Matt. Ryan?
Thank you. Uh, Nuriya, thank you for this. Um, I agree. Tina, that this is really, uh, this is really a big step forward. I remember meeting with you, Nuriya, when I was a, a baby TAB member and giving you all my big ideas a few years ago that touched on a lot of this. And I know you've been including the cross departmental work around safe streets and parking and pricing. And, um, I see that here. And, and I know this has been underway for since that time, I think it's been a few years. Uh, and I've seen iterations of the framework in last year's budget. And so this has been kind of slowly vetting and building. Uh, and I also, I think it might surprise people, um, that this, we didn't have, we haven't had something like this. So this is not like a next version of a previous one. We literally did not have not had a city strategic plan. And so, um, I believe strongly that a lot of the, um, improvements that people would like to see, that, that we can do the greatest amount of breadth and speed if we get the organization part right. So I, I, I'm really excited about this. And, um, I know it's, it's urgent for, as far, as far as how council interacts with it. So, um, we'll see. But I, anyway, I applaud you and, and the whole team for getting, getting us to this point. And my question is, um, on, there's, there's some of these that I, on the, I guess, the priority actions under some of the categories, goal areas, some of the goal areas themselves, that I'm just especially interested in and specifically interested in knowing what's kind of like on, on, on course for those, um, so that I can know if I should need to weigh in on the, the city where the council work plan. Like specifically, strategy one, which is safe, has priority action on vision zero, incredible. So we have a study session on that, that got, it's after the council session or retreat. So I, I don't know the best way to do that, but that, and there's, there's probably a couple, there's a couple others here, I think on strategy seven B. There's the transit, and then there's the 15 minute model, um, neighborhood model. Yeah, I guess I'm just interested to know, like, do I need to, like, you know, weigh in on any of that? And I don't know the answer to that until I have a little better idea what, what's in there. So I don't, I know time is limited to ask you to like, you know, flesh like a lot of these out. So anyway, I guess my question is, is there a chance to maybe focus a, a question about a little more on what to expect from some of these? Or is that, do you think that's too much at this point with timing?
Well, I would say this, right? Like, I am not your subject matter experts and you have great department heads who know this, right? Please feel free to reach out on them. I, I would say call Natalie, uh, for your questions on vision zero, and she can give you chapter and verse on what's going there. And I would extend that invitation to each and every one of you, right? If you have a particular interest, please reach out to the department heads, um, to really dig into some of those because that's what we want here. Um, so that they can really look at and help you get into like, what does that look like? Because again, we want that to help you, inform you of what that policy level, uh, priority could be. So we don't expect that to get into the weeds tonight. We really want that to be an invitation for further learning. So please feel free to do that, um, as you move forward. And as you're, we know that the, the work we've been doing just happens to coincide with this pre-retreat, right? It wasn't planned. It just happened to be synchronicity. So as you're looking at the dashboard, that gives you a little bit more information um, as we, uh, move in that direction as well. So play around with that and see what that looks like. But I think that's just timing and reaching out. And you happen to have a little bit of, for your vision zero priority, if that is what you're looking at, you have an advantage because we're going to be talking about that soon. But certainly just reach out to department heads and ask them the questions that are on your mind. And what I will say too, and I appreciate your kind words, right? It has been a journey. There has been a lot of foundational work, uh, that we have done in the past few years. And um, I appreciate the expertise and the skill set that this entire leadership team has done to bring us to this point um, as we have done. And I will say that I know sometimes it is frustrating when, when you all are asking us for questions on reports and wanting more information, I will say that I used to start in my first year with, oh, my goodness, I yearn for reports, right? It is, it was interesting for me to come to a city and not have as much reporting, um, strength, uh, as I would want. And we are building that too. So as you are asking for things, know that sometimes we may not have them, and sometimes we will, and we are building that up. Uh, and so, uh, as we continue to hear some of your questions, we will give you And so as we continue to hear some of your questions, we will give you what we are able to. And we will continue building what we do not. And so just know that we are. Improving and strengthening our. Administrative and management tools every day and your questions help us do that.
Thank you. And I just just want to kind of put a pin in that. I think similar to our financial discussions for the budget last year, go and talk to staff, figure out the ways, you know, look at what's already happening. And I, my question for you, Nuriya, I think you just answered, which is, you know, our staff available to meet with us and as we're preparing. So that we can, you know, fine tune our ideas and figure out the hows.
They absolutely are.
Thank you. Okay, we've got four minutes left in this agenda item. If we need a little more, we can take it, but trying to get you all done at a reasonable time. The, as far as concerns or questions around the retreat agenda itself, I have heard people lift up. Two things so far. Please let me know if I've missed anything that we may want to consider. A little more time for the work plan items and discussion there, making it possibly a little more similar to last year. And then the other was around maybe a little more time for some communication, team building work that could could just. Come out of that second day activity, but. Things to think about. I think these are just suggestions for staff and for the retreat committee. Perhaps if that's an okay way to to think about it, we can take it back, have another discussion, check in with y'all.
We certainly could and and the agenda is yours. I I will say, and again, I I have not been here forever. I will round three years in May. Previous retreats have not had as many process items as this year has. You have brought forward a lot of process items, and so we were building in some of that. Submitting your ideas for your priority areas might help. Those priority areas go faster, and so that is why we were hoping to get your submissions earlier. Last year, at the last retreat, the suggestion was to not have process items at that retreat. And maybe push those off into another time. That is an option if that is what you so choose, but in. This one, I believe we had heard you wanted process items, so it really is a choice of council. We could also have longer days if that is what you want. And so. We have a four hour day. We had heard in the doodle poll that you wanted something different. So. I would say that it is the will of council and we can try to accommodate what your preference is.
Right, so. Maybe maybe let me just kind of summarize. Matt, do you have a question? Otherwise, I've got just kind of a quick summary of of what I've heard and that may be.
I just had a question about, yeah, I just had a question about what kind of Nuriya said and like. Is there, is there a way to build sort of flex time on the backend of day two? Because the only reason I ask is like. If we're just going strong, what we're like, oh, we're not done yet. And it's four o'clock. I would just hate for it to just kind of end just. And and we're not done, just because I have a sense. Given that to Darius' point, we're going to spend a lot of time on process. That means priorities are going to be a little shorter. I just. Knowing some of you longer than others and some of you have gotten to know a little bit better. There's a lot of really good ideas in this in this group and I I just, you know, I just didn't know if there's flex on the backend in case we want to push through. And there's just some stuff that needs to be tied up and just, you know, throw a bow on before we conclude. So that's my only question.
Okay, and I see more more questions popping up. May I? Taisha and Tara, let me ask you this first, since you've got your hands up. Would it be all right if I asked a starting question or would you like to respond to Matt before I? I move us there.
I have a one second thought that process items are priorities. So I I hope people consider that. There are priorities, but these process items that we didn't do last year. Are to me are pri, some of our priorities. I I just just wanted to throw that out there.
Yeah, thanks. And then let me, so let me just start. I think the overall question and and this is separate from how we do it. So. Separate question from how? Who would like to have more time on the agenda for talking about our work plan priorities? We can figure out the how if there is a majority, but just kind of straw poll. Would folks like we we can figure out how would folks? Do folks feel like it's missing? Would you like to have more time to talk through work plan priorities?
Point of clarification or whatever Robert ruled to amend or whatever that would be. But essentially, I would, I I'm not voting for more time for a specific item, but just more time because I think both items will require more time. So. I would actually propose just adding two hours and extending out from there. So that would be my.
More time. Thank you. Thank you for that. Okay, so let me let me just change my straw poll. Who is who is open to having more time at the retreat? Okay.
Nicole, do you mind if I clarify?
Yes.
Because I got my hand up. I would, I would put it in the form of flex time. Just is that have have the option for additional time. Like at the end of each day. So that in order to finish our gender, rather than scheduling additional hours, that'd just be my vote.
Yep, okay, but just open to the possibility of having more time than what is currently stated.
Correct, yes.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, Matt, do you have a question?
Yeah, just kind of a clarifying. I I like the idea of the flex time, but I'm wondering if we might be a little. I mean, maybe if it's flex and we just throw it out there, we're fine. I'm just wondering if we might be a little premature because. I think what might dictate this is once we see all of our priorities, we might go, oh, man, like. That's some big stuff or we might go, oh, man, we're gonna we're gonna knock through that. We all align. We all agree. Full speed ahead, right? So anyways, I I think there might be a chance to kind of come back to this a little bit, but I think if we start and say, hey, more flex time, but I think I also trust the committee. That if they see the the items come in and they're like, oh, yeah, all right, we're going to need to add it. I I trust you guys to then, you know, add more if you feel the need to, but but I don't know if we need to settle it now per se.
Yeah, no, they, I just, and again, this is not a settling. This is just an open to straw poll, just so that we know what what we're working with. Tara.
Well, the only thing that I have to say at this point is, is the lighter day is the first day. It's only four hours. In a sense, it would be easier to add the flex time. To that day to make it six hours and six hours, but I'm worried people are gonna fill up their time. That day with other things if we wait too late to decide that we're going to extend it. So I like the personally, the idea of adding, let's say, two hours onto Thursday, because then we can just. If we finish process, we can go right into starting at least the next subject. That's just me. I just thought I'd throw that out there before it's too late.
Yeah, so that that was sort of my second level question of how we get there, but I think just. First, like, it's not necessarily that we're going to have more time, but are are folks open to the possibility? That we may need to schedule some more time and then we can. Tara just put out a night, what I think is a nice proposal for how we could potentially do that. So. Just want to check again, folks open to the possibility of having a little more time to do a few more things at the retreat. Okay, cool. All right. And Erin, I see your hand, your hand was raised. I'm gonna take that as a hand raised to you. Okay, great. So the idea is that we've heard that retreat committee can take back and look at, especially once we have a sense of what may be coming. We have talked about pushing off process. Is pushing off process to another discussion, anything that folks would be open to? Again, we're not deciding right now. This is just to give retreat committee. Some insight into what you all would like, because we're not going to have a whole lot of time to come back to you all in a meeting before the retreat. Are folks open to pushing out process? You can say no. And, you know, you feel that process is really important. Okay, I'm seeing seeing some negatives there. Mark.
Yeah, I think I think process is important as well as work plan items. I'd like us to. Really look at ways we can make our experience. A more productive one and a better one, and and I think that will serve the community better as well. And. So, yeah, I'd like to have that conversation at the retreat, not just put it aside and give it short shrift.
Yep, thank you, Mark. And it looks like I'm seeing mostly unanimous agreement. Just quick straw poll. Anybody raise your hand if you are open to cutting process and putting it later. No one. Okay, great. Thank you. This is super helpful as retreat committee. And then so then what I heard was look at potentially some flex time. Look at the idea of more time on day two and just kind of. Have the days be similar length. Retreat committee, Tara, staff, is there? Do you feel like there is any information, additional information we need to move forward and figure some of this out?
I think we are good, honestly, and I I just thank you all for your. For your comments and your insights and think we got great feedback.
Great, thank you. Thank you. Is there anything else that anyone has on this item? Thank you. The one thing, because it's a special meeting, does this the point where I need to do a time check? Okay, wonderful. Okay, then we are ready to move on to our next item. Miss Alicia.
All right. Thank you, Mayor Pro Tim. Our next item is item three B on tonight's agenda, and it is an update on the Day Services Center.
Thank you so much.
And council members, when you come late to a meeting with a multi cross departmental group, you get ball and toll to do the update. And so here I am. So you have asked us and we have received, I know you have received a lot of information about the Day Services Center. And I will say, as I mentioned, this is really a cross departmental. Initiative. It involves Housing and Human Services, Boulder Police Department Utilities and Planning and Development Services. And I know that we have had a multitude of hotlines and information that have gone out. I know we have a project timeline. And we have talked about this in different forums and you asked us for an update on where we are currently. Kurt had shared previously in a hotline background of this council priority and the recent outcome of a good neighbor. Meeting that is required as part of the conditional use review. In response to comments and feedback gathered at that meeting and those gathered on a be heard questionnaire. The Boulder Shelter for the Homeless submitted its management plan or. Resubmitted, I should say, its management plan to include two main changes. The first was there for their facility to be open during. The day for services and the second is to increase their shelter beds. From a hundred and sixty beds to a hundred and eighty beds. Currently, they only serve a hundred and eighty clients on severe weather nights. Their application has been submitted and is currently under review by P and D S. We have received a lot of questions and I know you have as well about what kinds of services are planned to be offered at the Day Services Center. An initial direction from council and previous engagement at the outset of this initiative made clear. That we needed to include and ensure basic services such as bathroom and shower facilities. Laundry, safe storage and meal services were included. And in addition, the Day Services Center will bring together a variety of community partners who would collaborate in one space. To meet a variety of needs for those experiencing homelessness. That includes peer support services, system navigation, case management, a variety of behavioral health. Physical subs, physical and substance abuse treatment offerings, coordinated entry, community court services. Transportation, including an additional dedicated bus to transport individuals from the Day Services Center to and from downtown. Tenant support services and respite beds. We also heard that the from the Boulder Shelter that it understands that continuous community dialogue is always important. And they have committed to reactivating their neighbor shelter action group to encourage constructive collaboration, learning and solutions to impacts. These changes may have on the surrounding neighborhood and they have invited BPD to join that group as well. They have also shared with us and with community members that they are open to anyone who would like to tour their facility. And discuss concerns about services of home or or homelessness in general. Importantly, I'll say too, that we've also received many questions about how we as a city organization are planning on supporting the Day Services Center upon its opening. I want to say really clearly that we reaffirm our commitment to the success of the Day Services Center and believe it will be. Yet another important asset that contributes to our collective goal of providing much needed services to our unsheltered community. Specifically, we have shared with the shelter and publicly now with you that we commit to the following. We will increase vigilance from our safe and managed public spaces team. Led by our utilities department, but it is a cross departmental team. And we will continue reporting out on the public facing dashboard so that you and community can see the status of our cleanup efforts. We have installed lighting at the Rosewood Underpass and have a camera already installed there. We will commit to maintaining that lighting and we are looking to place a portable camera at that location as well. Our code compliance team from Planning and Development Services and our code enforcement team from Boulder Police Department. Will review code violations to monitor trends and work with B with the Boulder Shelter for the Homeless to address any concerns that may come up. BPD currently has a liaison officer already dedicated to the Boulder Shelter on second shift from two PM to midnight. With this expanded operations at the Day Services Center, we commit to adding another liaison officer to cover from the six AM to four PM. For additional coverage. BPD already has a dedicated patrol or has dedicated patrol already deployed throughout the district. And they will endeavor to provide increased patrol as able to increase invisibility throughout the area. Beyond the shelters action group that they mentioned, BPD has offer has also offered publicly. To meet with community and neighborhood organizations in existing monthly neighborhood meetings. If desired or as requested to make sure they are hearing any concerns. And we'll be monitoring the data to ensure we are capturing calls for service appropriately so as to adjust any strategies if needed. HHS will continue to meet regularly with various partners at the Day Service Center to monitor progress and evaluate program needs. Because this is your council priority, we will also be reporting council to to you as council. So that you and community will have periodic updates and we can all ensure that we are reporting out on progress. And successful outcomes and addressing any concerns that could arise as well. We understand that some in community are apprehensive about the expansion of services at the shelter. And I hope that you see that we are leaning in to true partnership to make this initiative a true success. The Day Services Center itself will not address all our needs across the city, nor can it be a single solution for all those needing our help. But we truly believe it will be a powerful addition to the current suite of tools that lead to real improvement outcomes. To some of the most vulnerable members of our community. So that is where we stand now and we've got additional members of our team if you have additional questions, but that is our update.
Wonderful. Thank you so much for the update. Do folks have any questions? Yes, Taisha.
Thank you so much, team, for this update. As you know, a lot of these decisions were made before the elected newly elected officials came on, so. Just that institutional knowledge is absolutely critical. As some of you know, I went through eighteen months of statewide planning for the reintroduction of wolves. To the state of Colorado and that was a Herculean effort that was. Requiring a lot of different governmental entities, partners, communities, et cetera. And one of the things that we found to be incredibly helpful was a frequently asked question document. That really had all of the questions that were that have been asked in one six inch form. So that people don't have to go past and look up emails and use search functions, but really there is one voice. The city has one voice. And so I'm really grateful for these responses. But I'm also eager to continue to make sure that we are speaking with one voice as a city. So that's a recommendation. I'm also grateful to Kurt for including the questions that I asked in the hotline. Because again, I'm hearing different responses to those questions and so to be able to have again. That information shared in a hotline, but I also want to caution us on over reliance on a hotline. Not everybody is following hotlines. Not everybody has the capacity. One in ten of our fa, our families are food insecure and are on the brink of homelessness. So the idea that we are going to rely so heavily on a hotline. Is troubling. So I'm I'm grateful again for this additional time on the agenda to talk about this critical issue. Because this is, this must succeed and in order for it to succeed, there has to be community support. And so if we can't handle the issues that we have when the the shelter is only open at night. I'm hesitant to expand it to day services, but honestly, the responses that were provided tonight. Really instills me again with insight, excitement and with the opportunity to work with the community. So I'm hopeful that these responses are helpful. And also I wanted to apologize to Michael Block, whose name was used in the email that Kurt put in the hotline. I was asked if the questions can be used in the hotline and I said, absolutely. But I was not made aware that any additional commentary that I put in that email would be used and certainly not. The names of others and others' conversations that I've had. I am aware as a public official and even just as a. I am aware as a public official and even just as a public entity that my, all of my emails and correspondence and texts are Cora. I've been Cora before as a commissioner for Colorado Parks and Wildlife. However, I will do my part in better articulating what is appropriate for a hotline and what is to be internal for communication. But again, I just wanted to personally apologize to Michael Block, as I know he is taking already a lot of heat. And any of my comments were really made with the idea to continue to support him, the board, the community, and all of those who want to make sure that everyone in our city can thrive. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much. Tina, I believe you're next.
Yeah, thank you so much for all of this work and for making it clear how the city is going to support this effort that the shelter has taken on and has raised their hand to help people find solutions to housing and address their housing insecurity and the other problems they might be enduring. A couple of questions I had was, is there a way, I know that we're gonna make a dashboard available with the SAMs cleanup. Can we put in the same place the service calls that are happening to the area as well?
I'm happy to take a look at that. I know we track service calls and we have those separately, because service calls are a function of BPD, unless they are service calls for encampments, and, and those are in a, those are in a similar place on the dashboard. So if you're, if you're talking about BPD calls versus SAM calls, those are separate. So calls for service for SAMs are located on the same dashboard? Are you talking about both?
Well, I was just trying to think of if there's a way we can just create a snapshot so the community can see it in one place and maybe not go to two places, if that's possible. But I, I hate to have data in two places, I get that.
Well, we'll, we'll, we'll take that question and we'll try to figure out how to make, how to, how to see if we can do something at that location that really is, is slightly different.
Okay, and then the other question I'd have is just if we could, if it's possible, and if it makes sense, to show what budget we're dedicating, that might be incremental to what we're currently dedicating to that neighborhood.
Okay, I take the question and we'll look into it, yeah.
Perfect. And then finally, I'm, I'm just wondering if we can get an update on some point on our conversations with the county to being able to address encampments that might risk the fire, create a fire danger in those areas that are dry.
And I, yeah, I don't know if anybody on the team has an update on any of those conversations, but happy to follow up.
Yeah, thank, and I know that's a, a bigger issue and it's not a new issue for this particular effort that we're taking on. So thank you so much for all the, yeah, all the information, thanks.
Anybody else?
Erin's got his hand up.
Oh, thank you, Matt, I didn't see that. Yes, Mr. Mayor.
I just wanted to really briefly say, Nurya, I appreciate the response that you gave us tonight and the city's efforts to be proactive in considering how we might react to any issues that occur in the neighborhood after the opening of the Day Services Center. I know we're committed to working with the shelter and the community on making sure that it's a success for the people accessing the services and for everyone who lives in the area. So just appreciate all the efforts that we're taking in that direction.
Thanks so much.
Thank you, agreed. Anybody else have any questions? All right, and I believe that takes us to the end of our meeting before we, did I, are, are you supposed to say that, Miss Alicia? Okay, thank you. But before we end, I neglected to take time to just give kudos to Chris and Pam and Mark just for the wonderful presentation. Nurya, for you and your whole team, for all the work that you've done on that citywide strategic plan. It is so much, and it's actually quite exciting to be on the first council that gets to experience the first citywide strategic plan. So thank you for giving us that specialness of being the first council in Boulder's history to have this. So really, really appreciate all your work. It is very useful, and it is, oh shoot, 9:51, if I am doing my, my East Coast math translation correctly. I will call the meeting to a close. Thank you all so much for being here tonight.
Great, Nicole, thanks so much for running the meeting so well and give me a little break.
Yeah, feel better, hope, hope you get well real soon.
Appreciate it.
Double well.
Hi, everyone.